All right. Hello. Good evening. Welcome to this October 26th, 2020 episode of the West Orange Board of Education Virtual Edition. Mr. Calabano.
Rockwell, Mr. Alper.
Present.
Mrs. Merklinger.
Here.
Mr. Rothstein.
Here.
Mrs. Triggs Scales. And Mrs. Tony Cliff.
Present.
Please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the people for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice.
Notice meeting, please take notice, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided for in a following manner. That a written notice was sent from the Office of the Secretary of the Board at 4:00 PM on January 7th and September 17th, 2020. That said, notice was sent by regular mail to the West Orange Township Clerk and the editors of the West Orange Chronicle and the Star Ledger. That said, notice posted in the Lobby Administration Building of the Board of Education.
Right. Thank you. May I have a motion for consideration of the closed in public meeting minutes of October 5th?
On motion.
Second.
All right, Mr. Calabano.
Mrs. Merklinger.
Yes.
Mr. Rothstein.
Yes.
Mrs. Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Triggs Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right. Up next, Student Liaison Report. So I'd like to welcome our two new student liaisons, Olivia Ridley and Andre Celestin. Welcome aboard. We're glad to have you here and you guys can take it away and introduce yourselves and let us know a little bit about what you're going to do.
Hey there. So my name is Olivia Ridley and me and Andre are really here just to represent, to speak on behalf of the student body. I really want to emphasize student outreach and student representation. I think especially amidst, you know, all of the recent, not only like, like kind of like social conflict, but also just the pandemic. It's a very strange situation for everyone involved and especially the students. So I thought now more than ever, it's really, it's really important to, for the students to kind of have representation and a more direct perspective into kind of like the going ons of, you know, the town's meetings. So I'm really excited to be here and very grateful to be here as well that we have this opportunity to kind of gain this perspective. So thank you so much and we're so excited to get started.
Hi, I'm Andre Celestin. I'm a senior at the high school. Just like backing off of what Olivia said, yeah, we're super excited to be here and be representing our student body. Not just the student body, but our students in general. The pandemic has definitely taken a toll on a lot of us emotionally and has gotten us a little bit down. But hopefully we can try and provide some, some light and some insight to you guys and to our teachers on like, you know, how to help in things and how to make things just a little bit better in our cute little town.
Great. Anything else for us tonight?
No.
Well, we're very happy to have you guys aboard and, you know, we're all very glad to have you and we look forward to hearing what you have to bring to the table.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, Dr. Cascone.
Oh, you're muted, Dr. Cascone.
Listen, this is standard operating procedure. I leave it on mute. You remind me to take it off and that's how I commence the superintendent's report.
You don't spend enough time on Zoom, so it's hard to get used to this.
Well, it's SOP. I'm a rule follower, Gary. Mr. Rothstein, I'd like to echo those, those words of welcome to our, our student liaisons. Mr. Alper and I had an opportunity to, to meet with them and Ms. Connor, their advisor. Last week, we had a great meeting and just kind of spoke about working together this year and, and having him part of, part of the group. So welcome and we look forward to working with you as well. Mr. Alper, I'm going to dispense with the HIV report first before I go into the opening report. So we do have one, one HIV, one HIV incident that was, that complaint that was filed. I did review the investigative summary of this incident. I did engage in some follow up conversation with the District Anti-Bullying Coordinator to clarify a couple of points and do support the finding as rendered, which is that it did not meet the criteria for HIV. This, this enters the complaint to the record, so to speak, and then at the successive board meeting would be where you would either confirm or overturn that decision back to me. So that is the HIV report for this evening. You have all been furnished with a copy of it. Any questions on that? Okay, very well. Okay, so just wanted to, to provide some, some updates with regard to our opening of school, which is our hybrid cohort model, which is scheduled to commence on November 9th. Last week, we closed out the window for the submission of the virtual opt out. And that totaled upon completion, 2,964 students. Families had opted them into the virtual only model. Just as another statistic there, 1,130 of those opt outs were at the high school level. Understanding that this reduction in, in students who are coming into our facilities on a daily basis could very well enable us to offer more time onsite. However, I should be candid that initially we are going to be starting with the plan as developed and then be looking at opportunities to perhaps expand upon days in. And that would be first and foremost with the students who we know are at greatest risk at being home virtual learning, namely some of our specialized populations, special needs students. That being said, we have had our autistic classes pre K through 12, including our preschool students with disabilities that have been in since October 14th. I had the opportunity to go to the Betty Madalena Early Learning Center last week and it was terrific to, to see our students in and really staff members, you know, really, really doing a fantastic job and quite frankly, looked very, very happy, you know, to be working with their students again. All of the safety protocols were in place. It was a good opportunity for me to get down to the school. I got, you know, collected a couple of important pieces of feedback from the teachers, which we're going to take into consideration moving forward. And so very pleased that we've been able to do that. Originally, we were planning on, on transitioning in additional self-contained classes this week. Unfortunately, the shutdown of our transportation department put us off kilter a little bit with that plan. And we are planning on starting up for those students as well on November 9th. I'd like to also note that for our parents, we are finalizing a hybrid instruction parent guidebook, which the curriculum instruction portions of that are done. We're waiting just for the building principals to finalize their sections and we, we foresee releasing that tomorrow or Wednesday morning at late, at latest. It's not as long as the one that was originally submitted, which was about 47 pages. This one's about 18, 19 pages and it'll really provide parents with a lot of valuable information that could help inform the, the entry, entree into school on, on November 9th. A couple of other things that are happening, just in terms of preparations. This week, we'll be hosting, not unlike the town hall that we did publicly for families, we'll be doing similar Q and A with staff. It's important that the administration, I'll be doing that with my senior cabinet. And it's important that we avail ourselves to staff members to raise questions and concerns. Many of which are valid and which are, are, can be attended to and which we obviously want to do. If there's any stones that have been left unturned in advance of our November 9th start date. Also very excited to inform the community that we will be doing a multilingual family town hall on November 2nd. I'm working in collaboration with Mr. Plata, the K-12 supervisor of World Languages and ESL, and we will have Spanish and Creole speakers on that call and it'll be very similar to what we did a couple of weeks ago in answering questions there. In terms of student cohorts, my understanding is that the student cohorts have been finalized. I understand that they're also in different states of dissemination to parents. I know that I received Kelly Elementary Schools up here today in hard copy. They're going to be mailed out, but I think the expectation could be that in the next 24 to 48 hours, you should be receiving that cohort information from your school. So you understand exactly on which days your children will be attending during that model. We are continuing to prepare our staff to, to operate within this, you know, very different type of instruction, this hybrid instruction. And so over the course of the last week, we had our middle school and high school teachers starting to come in a staggered fashion to kind of get staggered. So we had small numbers coming in at a time to get into their classrooms, working with department supervisors and, and technology department members to set their classrooms up, the technology to walk around and to sandbox it, if you will, and understand exactly how that works and, and what it feels like to be trying to manage two groups of students contemporaneously, virtually and, and in the classroom. And today we started that same process with our elementary teachers. That was following up on days of virtual PD where, you know, we call it kind of technical front loading in advance of those onsite days and preparing our staff members. You'll notice on tonight's agenda, there is a team of ed tech team members. Each school, elementary schools will have one, middle schools will have two, and the high school will have three, and these staff members. And I'd like to just, to just offer kudos to this team. They've been, as they, many of them were in, in getting us prepared for the virtual learning. They've done the same here and, and serving as turnkey trainers to their colleagues. They've done an amazing job and definitely want to publicly thank them for their efforts as well as our technology integration specialists, Mr. Costa, Ms. Tomasi and Ms. Mendez, who's been kind of coordinating, facilitating that effort as well as Mr. Santiago, you know, who's doing kind of the heavy lifting work, you know, in the background, not necessarily tweet worthy, but critical in terms of procuring the necessary supplies, you know, whether that's $40,000 worth of AirPods. You know, in order that we can ensure the highest level of quality of sound to our students that are learning virtually, whether they're hybrid or fully virtual students. In terms of our, perhaps most importantly, in terms of our ventilation work, I'm happy to report that the bipolar ionization units installations have been completed at Edison, Gregory, Mount Pleasant, Kelly, Redwood, Roosevelt, St. Cloud and Washington Schools. The installations are in process at the high school, which is, I understand is about, was 60% complete as of 8:22 this morning. Liberty 25% complete, Hazel 25% complete. And then obviously all of our, the spaces that are utilizing the mobile purification units have been deployed. I have been working with the, the W O E A, the Local Educational Education Association, who has formed a health and safety committee, an independent health and safety committee, if you will. Had a couple of very constructive meetings with them and we will be organizing walkthroughs of the buildings with representatives from that health and safety committee, as well as building principals and head custodians. So that we can, you know, they can serve almost kind of as, as a spokesman, if you will, to, to certify that, you know, the work's done and then to put their lens on it as well. And if anything is turned up in those, those, those walkthroughs, we still have a couple of weeks by which we can address them in a follow-up manner. You know, so we are, you know, we're walking towards November 9th. We, we certainly understand and recognize that, you know, that, that, you know, the cases are going up. But we are also keeping a critical eye on the State Department of Health website and the COVID-19 risk matrix, which is really a resource that is available to local departments of health to help advise local school districts as to the mode of operation, which is either recommended or necessitated as a result of the level of cases in a particular region. Now, all, all the regions, last I looked as of Friday of last week in the state of New Jersey, had been elevated to a moderate level of risk out of four levels, that being the second of four levels. And within that moderate level of risk, the either full in-person or hybrid instruction are both still permissible. If the region were to be elevated beyond that level into a, into, into the orange level, which is, you know, medium level of risk, then that might be a point in time which we, we might look to our local department of health for a consultation as to whether it merited a change in gears. But at this juncture, we have, we have, you know, we've spent the last two months really with a concerted effort to, to really certify through PPE, through training and through the remediation of deficiencies in our buildings that we like the 300 some odd other school districts in our state, if not more at this point in time, that are currently operating in hybrid, that we can, we can do what they've done and do it safely. And so that, Mr. President, is my report.
Fantastic. All right. We'll take some board member questions, starting as always with Mr. Rothstein.
Thank you so much. You threw me off the other week when you started out of usual order. Just a couple of questions. First of all, the FAQ document, Dr. Cascone, is that linked to from the Board of that website? I think it is.
It is, yes, sir.
Okay, terrific. So anyone who wants to, it's a terrific document. Anyone who wants to go through that, woboe.org.
Right, right on homepage, upper left-hand side under helpful links.
Terrific. I have forgotten, and I think that you just spoke about this. Can you just sort of big picture recap which, which schools do we expect to have students in attendance at the school prior to the 9th?
Right. So we, we have, we have students presently at the high school. Roosevelt, Mount Pleasant, BMELC, Kelly and Gregory. But those only spaces that we're using in those buildings had been remediated prior to the BPI. So all those classrooms, now many of them probably already have the BPI, but if they hadn't, they had had a mobile purification unit deployed to the classroom space.
Got it. And we're, and those are very small numbers of students.
Small numbers. Yeah, yes, sir.
And and then a question about the cohorts and as we're getting more information from parents and students, and of course, on the 9th, the week of the 9th, we'll find out who's actually really going to show up in person in school. Where they'll, do you think there will be a need or an opportunity to make adjustments in, in class placements? Or is the plan right now to stick to what the original assignments were?
Yeah. So if I understand the question, this, Mr. Rothstein, is this, in other words, if there are between now and the 9th, if we have folks who decide that they want to be virtual and, and weren't on the original virtual list, or in other words, we, we were counting them as folks who were going to come in for hybrid.
Correct.
You know, great question. And I, and I've actually gotten a couple of emails within the last 24 hours from parents who have said, hey, listen, you know, we really want to go virtual. And as we've said all along, you know, we obviously want to, understanding it's a dynamic environment within which to make decisions. You know, we're going to be as flexible as we can be with parents. Obviously, the move from hybrid to virtual is a less complex one. And so I've just been forwarding their emails, you know, to the building principal and asking them to, you know, to take that into consideration for the hybrids. I will tell you that the state has come up with a, is, is asking us to come up with a completely different designation as it relates to attendance. And so there's, there's hybrid student, like present onsite, present online and not present at all. Then there's virtual student, you know, not, you know, present online or not present. So we've had, we've had to come up with a whole different coding. But I think the reality of it is, is let's say that you had a parent make, you know, decide, you know, it's two, it's the first, you know, it's the first day of cohort A, and at the end of the day, the child comes home and says, listen, I can't do this, right? And that's their final decision. And that second day of the cohort, when they're supposed to be in their home. I think it's, you know, it's, it's an email to the guidance counselor. It's an email to the, you know, to the, to the building principal, to the teachers. And then I think it's just a matter of time before the administrative process catches up, which I would think would not take a long time for that to happen. So I think the, the general takeaway, Mr. Rothstein, a lot of flexibility, but also on the parent's side, recognize that it might take a day or two before that gets threshed out from an administrative standpoint.
And from the standpoint of, of just sheer numbers, if we ended up with some classrooms that, well, I don't expect this to happen, just had very few students or no students who were actually attending on certain days. Is there a flexibility to consider shifting how the different cohorts are, are formulated? Or is that too much of a?
No, no, it's not too much at all. In fact, you know, as we've started to get this cohort information in, I've already had some conversations, particularly on the special, on the special education side, where there are buildings where they're, you know, they're, they, in looking at the way their cohorts are laid out, they're realizing like they can have those students in four half-days a week instead of two by virtue of the numbers. And I think particularly for our self-contained special education populations, that's a pivot that will happen sooner rather than later just by virtue of the fact of two things. One, the need and two, the relatively small numbers makes it administratively, logistically less complicated to do. The other thing is when you start talking about, you know, regular ed, other grade levels, it raises a question of equity. So, you know, for example, if just by happenstance, you're in a school where you're in a grade in a class whereby you can get more and someone's in a class where they, you know, they, they don't have that, that availability, that, that option, it raises a level of equity from school to school based simply upon circumstance and idiosyncrasy. I think the, the, that conversation is, is a little bit easier to have for special education because I think the reality of it is, is if we can, if we can get 50 or 60% of our neediest students in, well, I think we get in whoever we can get in and recognize that, you know, that's perhaps fewer students who theoretically we may have to service additionally when we do have them back full-time. But I think the, the, in short, it's definitely something we're going to be looking at and when and where we can and where it doesn't necessarily create inequity across schools. We're going to try and bring kids in more if we can.
That's terrific. That answers my questions. Thank you so much.
Mr. Triggs Scales.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Dr. Cascone, what percentage of the families did not respond? Do you know that or number? Hard, hard number would be fine. Do you know?
Well, I, I think, you know, because it was, because it was a virtual opt-out, in other words, you know, it was, you know, we weren't asking, you know, parents regardless to fill it out. It was, you know, if you intended to send your child hybrid, you didn't necessarily need to fill out a request. So it's kind of hard to ascertain that. But what I would say, just, just as a follow-up question. Is that coming from a place of knowing that it was out there to be taken? Like, in other words, like awareness that the survey was there, connectivity, wherewithal that they had it as an option?
Right. Who by default are going to be virtual, who didn't really make a choice at all?
You mean who by default will be hybrid? Because it, because hybrid's the default.
Oh, hybrid is.
Hybrid's the default. So anyone, anyone who didn't fill out a survey, you know, and I imagine, but intends to have their child virtual, I imagine on the first, the first day or two of the hybrid, when they get an attendance call from the school saying, you know, why is your child not here? They're going to say, wait a second, I, I wanted to do virtual. Oh, okay. Well then, and then we'll know, right? So.
So you will have some shifts.
Potentially.
Yeah.
But I think, I think the good news is, is that because of the fact that we've started so robustly with the virtual, although I know we could, certainly suppose we could have some, some debate about that on some points. I get it. But I mean, we have been doing it and, and doing it for some weeks now. I think, you know, we're able to, to support those, those transitions back and forth relatively easy. And I think the students are as well, right? But yeah, we envisioned that in the first couple of weeks, we're probably going to see some, some fluxing and flexing back and forth.
Okay. And I'm also just curious, percentage of our little ones who showed up at Betty, do you know what the attendance rate was or?
Yeah. So we had about, if I, I have to, my number, if my memory serves me, we had about 21 students in that program that opted for, surprisingly, that opted for all virtual. And, but of the attendance of the students who were, who were, who had indicated, whose families indicated they wanted to come in, the attendance was quite good. I don't have an exact number, but the attendance was quite good. And they were being, they were being, we were, but most of them were being bused. So, you know, that was, that, that service was available to them. So the attendance was actually quite good for those that indicated they wanted to come.
Okay, great. Okay. That takes care of it for me. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Ms. Merklinger.
So I, this is, I think, great news, especially for some of our working parents that are looking to get their kids back into school. So I think the, the one question that I kind of have, and I think Gary kind of touched on it, but just to go a little further into it. If we see that after the first week or so that our classrooms can, or we have enough capacity where we can increase the number of days that our students are going into the classroom, will we look to do that? I'm hearing a little bit of feedback from parents in the community that they opted to go virtual because it wasn't worth sending their child into the school district for one day a week. But I wonder if that would change if there's the opportunity to increase the number of days that they can go onsite, so whether that's at the high school level, middle school level. And just in thinking that the numbers that have opted to go virtual, do we have that capacity to, to increase?
Yeah. Well, I mean, I, I think it's, you know, it's kind of a catch 22 a little bit because if, if by, it, it's only by virtue of the number of students who have opted out that we could potentially offer more time onsite. And if by offering more time onsite, the people who had previously opted to virtual come in, then we would probably not likely be able to continue to offer increased amount of time. So, so it's a little bit kind of a pretzel logic there, but, but I, I think, I think more importantly, you know, as we've kind of done throughout this is as we, as we arrive at these kind of big transition points, it's, let's, let's, let's get, let's get our feet planted. Let's get some momentum. And quite frankly, let's, let's see if this is something that we can do with, you know, for, for, for extent, for continuous periods of time without repeated disruptive shutdowns. Because I think, you know, that's, and I, it was a point I meant to mention in, in my opening. I'm sorry, Mrs. Merklinger, if I may.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, is, you know, that, and I, I mentioned this in an email, like, you know, that's kind of an exchange I had with a parent, good, good exchange, constructive, positive, was, you know, how long we're able to stay open consistently and continuously remains to be seen. And I think, you know, when you, you look at the experiences that some school districts have had, not all, but some have had whereby, you know, they've had to close schools, they've had to close classrooms. In some cases, it doesn't necessarily mean we have to close a classroom or a school, but the teachers who are, who are scheduled to be in that classroom teaching are quarantined because of contact with, say, a family member, and then they're not in. And so when you have students coming in for the hybrid cohort model for their, their one or two days, they don't actually see their teacher in the classroom because that teacher's quarantined. And so I think as the cases rise, the likelihood that it's going to impact our operations is actually quite good. You know, well, bad, but likely. And I think that's something we'll have to, we'll have to see, you know, we'll have to see just how disruptive that is to operations. And certainly we would need to develop some continuous momentum forward, I think, before we would be ready to kind of build into more time. So I think first and foremost, let's get our feet planted in this hybrid cohort. Let's see how it goes. Let's monitor the situation from a public health standpoint. And if we feel as if we're, we're on solid footing, then maybe we'll consider ramping up on that.
Thank you. And I just want to, you know, just commend and thank everyone. I know there was some, you know, concern over whether we're going to be able to stick to the timeline and getting our buildings ready. So I think that's a great, a great accomplishment that we were able to do that and that we're on point to start on November 9th. So thank you to everyone that was involved with that.
Absolutely. Ms. Tony Cliff.
Absolutely. Ms. Tunnygliff.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. I think most of my questions have been answered, so just wanted to say thank you for your report, Dr. Kascun.
All right, liaison, Ms. Celestin, anything?
Yes, I have two questions, actually. So the first one is in regards to the beginning of your report, Dr. Kascun. So I noticed that we have like the different programs and stuff for our special needs classes and our multilingual classes. But for the hard-of-hearing families, I wanted to know, I know Zoom has a program to do like closed captions. I'm not sure if we can unlock that with our subscription, but I know they have a closed caption. I, it's like an icon, and I wanted to know like if we could possibly do that for them as well, just in case they're afraid to come into school and be around other students.
So, so just to clarify, Andre, this is, this is for, for, for families or for students?
Um, for students and families, like if you were to do the board meetings.
Right.
Well, yeah, it's like an icon next to the.
Gotcha.
And it says like closed captions, so in case like anybody wanted to watch our board meetings or there's not someone who's able to do ASL or any form of sign language that they understand, they'd have that option to be able to still attend and understand everything that's happening here.
Brilliant, brilliant. See, there, there, our, our student membership is, is reaping dividends already, multiple perspectives. You know what? I think it's an excellent suggestion. I'm almost sort of ashamed I hadn't, we hadn't thought of it sooner, so thank you. And I will speak with Ms. Graff Tisa, our facilitator, and see what we can do to maybe add that as a feature for our future meetings and then also for some of our, you know, our town halls and things of that nature. So thanks so much for that suggestion. I've made note of it and will definitely follow up.
Thank you so much. And then another question. Do we have a, a certain location for the students who are afraid to come into school, but they don't have a source of connection or wifi to their Chromebooks? Or they just don't have, you know, connection or anything? Do we have a location for them to go and attend school but also not be around anyone? I'm not sure if that's possible, but is there any way that we could potentially do that?
Well, another, another good point, that one I could tell you, we have, we have secured several hundred mobile hotspots and we have been deploying those to the households that we, you know, that have, have brought to our attention that they're in need of them. So, and I suppose that would be a, just in a, kind of an advisory put out since we're broadcasting publicly here to some extent, is if anyone is experiencing, you know, does not have connectivity in the home, you know, we do have mobile hotspots, jet packs that we can lend to families and we have a couple hundred of them out already. So that's how we're kind of addressing that for students who might need them.
Okay, thank you so much. That was it.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Ms. Ridley.
Hey there, I just had a question regarding the special education students. I wanted to, I wanted to ask if any of them were at higher risk for COVID-19, if any of them were immunocompromised. And if so, I was just made a little nervous of thinking about all the students, you know, once school reopens, there are going to be more students in the building and therefore like, you know, high risk of exposure for these students. Are there, so how, I, I know that most of the, as of now, like a lot of the special education classes are like in one hallway in the school. But in terms, yeah, I was just thinking like in terms of keeping those students safe with the reintroduction of like, with all the other students in the school.
I'm sorry, Olivia, were you?
No, you can, you can.
This happened in the meeting the other day. We kept interrupting each other and we'll, we'll get on the same page, right? So, no, all kidding aside, because it's a serious question. So any, not unlike with staff, same thing with students. You know, if students are immunocompromised, you know, have a pre-existing medical condition that would put them at an elevated risk if, if contracting COVID-19 for developing significant complications from that, you know, have, you know, have medical exclusions, have most likely submitted medical exclusions through their parents and through their doctors and are more than likely already planning to study, you know, virtually from home. These special needs students who are coming in. And, you know, I hearken back, I believe it was to Ms. Holland's commentary from several meetings back, where she, 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 she kind of asked us to remember that this, this, this group of special needs students is, you know, there's, there's a, there's a, it's a wide spectrum, if you will, of different disabilities. And while, yes, there are some that have medical fragility, you know, there are, you know, many, many that, you know, for whom it is, doesn't represent a medical risk to come in. So my understanding is that any students that might have that would have already, you know, put in medical documentation to exclude them from coming in or to voluntarily make the choice to stay home and learn virtually.
Awesome. Okay, I was just, I was asking about those students in particular because I know some parents might have felt more inclined to like send them back just.
I see.
Some student, they weren't, it's sometimes, it's, they're not, they don't do so great, so well with virtual learning. And so parents might have been more inclined to send them back, but I think you're completely right. And I think a parent would most likely prioritize their health over kind of their, their competitive, you know what I mean?
Mm-hmm, I do. I know, but it's an interesting point, you know. I, I think, you know, we've seen, you know, even within that population of special needs students, even as much as, as, as many parents were really urging the return to school. And I think the, the preschool disabled classes are a good example of that. Those are some of the most challenged parents, right? Because, you know, with preschool students trying to, trying to do preschool online and, and we had, you know, you know, over twenty of them that ultimately opted to keep their children home in spite of the challenges. So I think in the end, I think whether it's because of a medical necessity or just a comfort level on the part of parents, I think we're seeing that parents are making the decision with kind of eyes wide open and based upon, you know, where they stand on it and what they feel their, their kids need, so.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Olivia.
All right, terrific. And I am good. Thank you, Dr. Kascun.
You're welcome, Ms. Trauper. Thank you.
Yep. All right, up next, questions from the public on agenda items only. You'll have three minutes. Please give us your name and address when you come in. And again, please do stick to the three-minute limit. We don't like to have to cut people off, but I know it's a particularly full room tonight, so it may become necessary. And Ms. Graff Tisa will give you the remaining instructions.
Thank you very much. Yes, so if you'd like to speak, it is the raise your hand feature located at the bottom of your screen. If you don't see it, you can touch your screen, your mouse, and it'll come up. For our, our attendees that have called in, it's star nine. You just have to dial it once and it'll put you in the queue. And when you're in the audience, you do not have to wait for anyone else to stop talking before you raise your hand. You put, raise your hand, it'll put you right in the queue. So Jeremy Flitt, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, it's Felice Flitt, 55 Bowland Drive. Ms. Markinger mentioned one day a week. I just want to make sure that that didn't change from one day a week to two days a week every other week. Also, I chose bus for my two children, one to Liberty, one to the high school. But I'll likely be driving them in the mornings especially and possibly on the way home as well. I just want to ensure that by my driving them back and forth, I'm not going to lose their spot in case maybe a few weeks down the line, they do, we do start to feel comfortable using the bus. And my third question is, there's many calendars out there for the return to school, most of which still have Election Day off. I just want to ensure where we can find the most accurate calendar of their schedule, specifically for the week of Thanksgiving and other weeks where there may be a half-day and, and things like that. And, oh, fourth question. A few weeks ago, a few board meetings ago, I had mentioned that the count, that the schedule on Power School for Liberty is not accurate, but the high school is for the times of the classes. The high, for Liberty, it still is a Monday through Friday, you know, start of the day until three o'clock or whatever. But the high school's accurate. First is the high school going to change to the new time and also how can we get Liberty's updated? And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next we have Molly Eisen. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Sure. Good evening. My name is Molly Eisen and I'm a special education teacher at Eisen Middle School. So teaching virtually has been challenging, but I am proud to say that my students have more than risen to the challenge. We have all worked hard to create routines and community despite not having yet met face-to-face. My students are becoming more comfortable and confident in my virtual classroom by the day. And I truly fear that hybrid learning will set back the progress that we have already made. Switching to hybrid now and disrupting the schedules and routines everyone has worked so hard to put in place and get used to, or at most, four half-days per month seems like a lot of risk with very little reward. In hybrid learning, I will have several cohorts with only one in-person student in a single period on certain days. If these students are not supposed to log on to Zoom while in school, which we have been told they shouldn't, how are they supposed to collaborate during group work with the remote students? And even when I will have more than one student in the room, they can't get near each other for safety reasons. Are they supposed to yell across the room to each other? During one of our professional development sessions, it was suggested that teachers assign a student to monitor the chat or the Zoom screen to alert us if a classmate has a question or an issue. That suggestion places an unreasonable burden on students and can be a serious impediment to students' learning, especially for those who already have a difficult time concentrating on one thing, as is. These educational reasons for remaining virtual do not even begin to touch on the serious health concerns of switching to hybrid learning at this time. Virus cases are dramatically rising with no sign of abating. Teachers should not be expected to effectively teach in an already compromised situation while also being constantly on guard to ensure that masks are on and being worn appropriately. If a student, teacher, or staff member sneezes or coughs, even if it's just from the dust in our old building, concentration will be disrupted and everyone will be on edge. These fears do not create a conducive learning environment for anyone. This plan to divide our attention and take it away from teaching is not the right thing to do, is a disservice to our students. If we have to be constantly looking over our shoulders, always on guard in case people are not properly wearing a mask and maintaining distance, that takes up a good deal of mental space. To add the burden of worrying for all of our safety beyond what we already need to worry about during quote-unquote "normal" times is too much. At some point, something has to give. We have shown that we can do our jobs effectively and safely from home. Starring hybrid learning now puts teachers and students' mental and physical health at even more of a risk. Please reconsider the decision to open schools on November ninth for hybrid learning. It is too much risk with potentially devastating consequences for seemingly very little instructional benefit at this time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Nicole Ruffo, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello. Hi. Hi, Nicole Ruffo for Overlook Avenue. I am coming from the perspective of a parent who also was a teacher. And I have many teacher friends right now who are sharing the same anecdotes and concerns that the previous teacher spoke of. We are currently in a pandemic, so obviously there are no perfect solutions. And the hardest part right now is that my children are just getting into the groove with virtual learning. I'm watching incredible teachers do an incredible job of connecting with my four children over a computer every day. The teachers are, are going above and beyond and the learning is occurring. I know it is so hard for some families, but I would rather my children be in regular school. Obviously, all of us, I think, would rather us be in regular times and regular school one hundred percent, but that's not a safe reality right now. I have a friend who is teaching hybrid and luckily she doesn't have to teach remote at the same time. But still, she said that the mental health of her being is gone down. It's a stressful experience being in the classroom and it's a safety concern for her health and the health of the children. I personally can't understand how a teacher is supposed to manage students on a screen and the students in the classroom effectively. That is a superhuman ask and these teachers are amazing, so that says a lot about asking too much of them. Also, I wondered if people are realizing that our students will only be seeing masked teachers Monday through Thursday in the classroom and from home. I wonder if maybe the next time we have a Board of Ed meeting, our Board of Ed members could sit around in this meeting wearing masks so that we can all see what it looks like to listen and learn from somebody wearing a mask on a screen and makes it a little bit harder to understand them. And I have a child with a speech issue, which I think will make it harder for her to understand what's going on. Also, teacher friends again are telling me that this mental health has been truly compromised by the hybrid model and it's not going well. They say that their classrooms are stressful, even though they're doing the best they can to make it a positive environment. There are no group activities, no partner work, they're not able to bring the children to the rug to hear a story and everyone is wearing a mask. I also have questions as a food allergy parent about how food allergies will be managed in the classroom and if they'll be eating snack and how that will safely occur. Also, how teachers will be getting a break during the hours that the, the children are in school. I know none of this is easy, but my family's inconvenience and stress is nothing compared to asking teachers to risk their lives and do impossible tasks. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, my screen. Okay, next we have Melinda Huerta. If you can please follow the prompt on the screen and give us your name and address for the record. Hi, Melindy there?
Hello.
Oh, there you are. Hi.
Hello, Melinda Huerta, seventeen, Park Drive South. And I had a couple of comments. One was about the budget. I noticed only four out of the eight elementary schools have clubs budgeted for an equitable experience. I think, why are other schools not participating or implementing clubs? That was my first question. The next one was in regards to the reopening of the hybrid model. We are, my family is excited but nervous at the same time. We are a high-risk family. However, the virtual learning has not been adequate enough for my children. And it is not the teachers and it is not the, I guess, the implementation. I think it's really just my children being very adamant about the virtual learning and it's just very difficult. They're in elementary school, one is a sixth grader, and it's just very difficult when I'm not home. It's almost like a full-time job to have to sit there and make sure that they're in each Zoom classroom. And it's just a lot of, a lot of stress in our house in terms for the virtual learning. So we did choose, and I think one of the student liaisons mentioned that, you know, we chose to go ahead with the hybrid model even though we still are very concerned about the safety. But we're just hoping, and, you know, like I said, the academic experience for my kids has really gone really low. And like I said, I don't think it's more that, I don't, I really am not even sure what else or what more we can ask or we can implement at this point. And I feel that I am not the only one going through this and I really, I, I, it's just a kind of a hard situation all around, I guess. But I think Dr. Kascun and the board and the student liaisons for, you know, communicating with the, with the, the public and really getting the input and, and being retroactive in this aspect of reaching out to the public and families. And I heard that we will be having multilingual meetings soon and I'm excited to have that implemented and watch that develop over time. And I love that suggestion of the screen, which the, the student liaison mentioned something about the captioning, closed captioning. I think that will be also very beneficial for our hearing impaired families and community. Thank you, everyone, and have a good evening and stay safe.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And next we have David Leach. If you can please follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is David Leach. I'm a teacher at West Orange High School. And I guess I, I really wanted to say a couple of things. First and foremost, I think, I think what Mrs. Trick Scales was getting at earlier is probably correct. Today in class, I had a student basically ask me how they could go. You know, to full remote from hybrid. And, and I referred him to the principal, that's what my supervisor told me to do. But, but I think that the kids and possibly their parents too. Are a little bit confused about the process and they probably would like something tangible, like the form that was up prior. So I think it might make sense to extend it or possibly provide something else that. That gets you that confirmation that you've basically opted out of going into hybrid and you're going to stay virtual. The second thing is a little bit specific, but. I'd like to bring up my room, which is at the high school, it's 11:54. It was on the carbon dioxide list last year for having poor circulation. So, so circulation has been an issue. And I was in my room a couple of days ago and there weren't any changes made. And I know that the high school has mentioned only 60% complete. And it's possible like that mine's just one of the 40%. But there's a couple of other things I think should be addressed too, like the window still won't open, so I don't even have a way to get like fresh air. And, you know, I didn't see any new air quality technology yet, but again, it could be that they didn't get to the installation of my room. And I know a lot of the adjacent rooms have the same issues, so I am a little concerned. The third thing I wanted to mention was, it was about the air purifier units themselves. Like I looked online and, and you know, clicked the links to the specific models. And it seems that they require a filter change every three to four months. And I just wanted to make sure that the logistics of that were being handled because, you know, if it's not maintained and tracked. At some point, we're going to have to worry to see or worry about if our, if our. Units are going to be doing what they're supposed to be doing and scrubbing the air. So I just wanted to make sure that the logistics of the filter changes weren't overlooked. And, and again, I just want to say that, you know, to all the parents listening. You know, I think, I, I understand that it is convenient to send your children to hybrid. But I think it would be, it would be safest for everybody if you can and do have the ability to go virtual, to go virtual. In this time, just because of the, you know, the increased spreadability of the disease during the season. Anyway. Thanks for, us teachers really appreciate everything and, and thank you, everyone, and happy holidays.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, it's listed as Jay Paul, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, my name is Jennifer Paul and I am a teacher at Redwood School. I'd like to first and foremost thank the board and the administration for considering the health of students and faculty. By beginning this school year with remote learning and taking all the precautions that they have, it's much appreciated. Teachers overall have taken virtual learning with stride. We had to completely relearn our craft. And many spent the summer learning new apps and services to help provide effective instruction. We now use those on a daily basis to keep students engaged. Believe me, using them is a daunting task. Creating well-executed lessons is nothing like it used to be. It takes much longer. In addition to lesson planning and execution being different, the teacher is no longer just what she was in brick and mortar. We are also tech support and we interact with parents continuously throughout the day. The workday is now 24/7 and at times 29 or even 37. That being said, we have met the challenge. Routines have been set, students and teachers are in the groove of virtual learning. It took time and getting used to, but our littlest ones are working away each day safely and in the best manner possible while enduring a global pandemic. That honestly deserves some praise. Most elementary students thrive on structure, stability, and consistency, and we have created that within our virtual classrooms. As we move closer to hybrid, the routine, the groove, and the success we have worked so hard to achieve will be challenged. The teacher will return to what she enjoys, students in person, but just a handful of them. Those students will have an entirely new set of rules and regulations. They will not return to cooperative learning groups or a teacher who can sit next to them guiding them as they're used to. They will not be able to interact with classmates. They will sit still masked in front of a teacher who's wearing a mask and a face shield. For the students on the other side of a computer, learning will also change. The teacher will be masked and more difficult to understand. Live learning will be interrupted as the teacher will be attending to in-person students. Teachers will be expected to manage both the students in front of them and those who are virtual simultaneously. Understandably monitoring one set of students restricts the ability to equally monitor the other. And yes, teachers are flexible and adapt, just as students do. But what will suffer, I fear, is the overall effectiveness of instruction. The ability to roll out new content will be obstructed. That's if everything goes well. Meanwhile, looking out there is the uncontrollable virus. Inevitably, there will be versions of quarantine, as Dr. C mentioned, affecting instruction. As people become sick or, and faculty become sick, students will be monitored by substitutes without continuous direct instruction. Currently, 41 of the 50 states are seeing spikes, New Jersey included. In the last week, New Jersey has had more than 1,000 new cases daily. And all around us, districts are closing or deciding to remain fully virtual, Newark, Patterson, Booton, just a few of them to name. Doctors and scientists are talking about the twin-demic, flu and coronavirus at the same time. And no matter the precautions we take, we can't control this virus. It's in control. An opening for it to enter affects our ability to provide effective and excellent instruction. I urge you to err on the side of caution, keep your teachers able to provide that West Orange-worthy education by keeping us fully remote until at least January. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Kimberly Buckley, if you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please. Kimberly Buckley, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, it may not be Kimberly, but that's what the Zoom name is under. Okay.
Hello.
There you are. Hi, there you are.
Hi, sorry about that.
No, it's okay.
Buckley, 10 Penbridge Road. I'm both a resident of West Orange and I'm a teacher at the high school. And I'd first like to start by expressing my gratitude for the efforts to restore some sense of normalcy for our students. Unfortunately, this pandemic doesn't care. Many of the friends I speak to, the colleagues I speak to, the neighbors and the parents, all share the same unnerving fear. I keep coming back to the same question. Why would we risk the health, safety, and quite frankly, lives of our students, teachers, and staff when we don't have to? Medical experts have warned the worst is yet to come, so why are we risking? The health, safety, and lives of our student, teachers, and staff when we don't have to? New Jersey cases continue to climb and hospitalizations are at a three-month high. So why are we risking the health, safety, and lives of our students, teachers, and staff when we don't have to? The state has reported at least 111 students and teachers. Who have either contracted COVID-19 or passed it along in the classroom. So why are we risking the health, safety, and lives of our students, teachers, and staff when we don't have to? Other districts have opened only to close and some, including Woodbridge, Norwalk, and Patterson, have extended remote learning. So why are we risking the health, safety, and lives of our students, teachers, and staff when we don't have to? Essex County has one of the highest case totals in the state. West Orange has experienced its highest surge since June and its biggest weekly jump. So why are we risking the health, safety, and lives of our students, teachers, and staff when we don't have to? Cases have been reported at Washington School and in the Transportation Department. So why, again, are we risking the health, safety, and lives of our students, teachers, and staff when we don't have to? We know band-aiding faulty ventilation systems are not ideal. And taking temperatures alone will not identify asymptomatic people. So why are we risking the health, safety, and lives of our students, teachers, and staff when we don't have to? A return to school places a lot of pressure on our students. They must wear masks and not eat for over four hours, plus sanitize their desks. This is a huge responsibility. So why are we risking the health, safety, and lives of our students, teachers, and staff when we don't have to? Social distancing, wearing a mask, and hand washing all help mitigate the spread of COVID-19, but they are not a guarantee. So why are we risking the health, safety, and lives of our students, teachers, and staff when we don't have to? We cannot wait for the lead from surrounding districts or make decisions based on the loudest and most threatening voices. We need to listen to families, teachers, and staff who fear the inevitable domino effect of any in-person learning at this pivotal moment. I can tell you, I wouldn't want to look myself in the mirror one day after people got sick, hospitalized, or God forbid, died. And ask the question, why did we risk the health, safety, and lives of teachers and staff when we didn't have to? Remember, this is a choice, not a mandate. Thank you and everyone stay safe.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Danielle, excuse me, Danielle Sacola, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello.
Hi. Can we get the name and address for the record, please?
Good evening, my name is Danielle Sacola and I'm a teacher at Redwood School. I'd first like to say thank you to the administration and the board for all of your support and guidance through this crazy time. I've been an employee for the West Orange District for 17 years and tonight I'd like to speak as a teacher. A parent of two elementary school students in a different district, as well as an employee in another district in New Jersey. As a teacher, I've spent countless hours this summer and school year learning and familiarizing myself with various apps and programs. I anticipated and I've used during this virtual learning experience. I've been putting this knowledge to good use and creating engaging lessons for my students. This is not an easy task, as it's nothing like presenting a lesson in the classroom. It is far more time-consuming to create a lesson that's both engaging and inviting for our younger learners. Although it took plenty of learning and it is quite challenging, I've gotten, gotten used to it and I'm rolling it out successfully. We are working through new content daily in my virtual classroom. We are in a routine and a schedule that the students understand and can anticipate. This is so important for our young learners. They need the routine and the schedule and to know what's coming next. This sets them up for success and gives them the sense of control that they need and leads to a comfortability level. Especially in these times. If we go to a hybrid model, they will inevitably lose that sense of control. Because their routine and schedule will change, causing a shift in how they are learning. They will have to learn another routine. Those in the building will learn new rules and new procedures for school because it will not be what they're familiar with. Those who remain remote or at home will have to learn new routines as the teacher will no longer be able to concentrate completely on a Zoom call. Instruction and learning will absolutely be interrupted at various times throughout the day. As managing two different sets of students will require the teacher to stop and adjust. A colleague in another district that is hybrid referred to it as a lawyer arguing both sides of a case. As a mom of two elementary school students, I make sure that my students have a good routine and structure during this very trying time. It is not an easy task working in a separate side of the house while they are working independently as a fifth grader and a second grader. But they do work hard and they've maintained a strict schedule, which makes them feel comfortable and gives them a sense of control. And accountability at this point in this learning environment, keeping them safe. I'm also an employee of another school district. The district that I work for as a coach. Has just decided today to remain virtual until January. Inevitably, this has altered our seasons and interrupted it drastically over the last two months. Our winter season is being pushed to spring just due to the rising cases. As far as my son's district, they just announced this morning as well that they are going virtual until January. No one can seem to control this virus, but we can control how we react to it. I know for a fact from healthcare professionals that are in my family directly. They are opening more and more floors in our New Jersey hospitals due to the spike in cases. I urge you to keep the current learning going as effectively as it is right now. Keeping our students and faculty of West and West Orange families safe as we enter a normal cold and flu season. Now adding COVID to the list considering we will most likely have to switch back and forth from hybrid to remote learning throughout the rest of the fall. Please be cautious and keep our schools closed at least through January. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Cami Cielo, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, Cami Cielo, 27 Clover Lane, and I am speaking as a teacher. I'm a teacher at West Orange High School. Many of our colleagues, including myself, have lost loved ones to this awful disease for which there is still no cure. I'm speaking up to ask you to please reconsider on November 9th reopening for hybrid instruction. As the second wave of COVID-19 is upon us and numbers are spiking in many cities across the country. Again, as you're probably aware, there has been a major spike in positive cases in West Orange alone this past week. According to Mayor Parisi and local media outlets such as westorange.org. In fact, a robo-call recently went out urging West Orange residents to work remotely. We know that some of these local cases involve some of our student athletes and that our entire transportation department is shut down right now because of exposure. It is safe to assume that a number of other positive cases are connected to children or adults who are a part of the West Orange School District. We should also keep in mind that oftentimes in situations like these, unreported cases are in existence. As a result, this puts all of us at even greater danger, greater risk at this time. In addition, while bipolar ionizers and purifiers are being installed and other measures are being taken as an attempt to improve the conditions within our buildings. There's still a great risk of mass infection and spreading within the school community at large. Many school districts, including colleges and universities, have announced and will most likely continue to announce. They will remain 100% virtual indefinitely and/or until January 2021. At minimum, including Glen Rock, Patterson, Booton, Carney, and Newark, to name a few. West Orange School District makes for a tough comparison to other surrounding districts as we are much larger in size than most. While proper ventilation systems for classrooms are important, what about the ventilation in common areas such as hallways and offices? There are other precautionary measures where we might fall short based on our budget and/or decisions being made. Including but not limited to the lack of a continuous supply of the following for everyone. PPE, including gowns, hand sanitizers, disinfectant wipes for communal shared properties such as computers, printers, desks in classrooms and common areas. And plexiglass dividers. Plexiglass dividers, sorry, lost my spot, for every desk in every room. This past week, as teachers have been called into the buildings to test and make sure our technology is working. We at West Orange High School did so without having these aforementioned items at our disposal in our classrooms. In addition, there's also, there are also classrooms that do not have windows. And this is problematic in itself if they are deemed to be usable or unusable condition solely based on the installation of these technologies. A team comprised of teachers and our custodians in the form of a health committee is certainly a nice effort. But these professions are not certified health specialists and therefore cannot really speak on the effectiveness of these products. Is there proof that these technologies are effective solutions on their own to solve ventilation issues? Is there proof from third-party medical health professions that our return to campus will be 100% safe? A study was recently released and highlighted on CNN that discusses the importance of open windows and glass dividers for desks. I've included a link as I will forward this as an email. In addition, South Orange Maplewood School District recently announced they will be delaying everyone's return to campus. Due to the concern about the lack of third-party inspection. In quotes, by experts in the air system of rooms to which teachers and then students would report. To determine the extent to which ventilation and filtration is adequate as per ASHRAE guidelines.
Thank you.
Thank you. Maxine Davner, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please. Hi, Maxine. Maxine, are you there? Okay, I'm going to mute Maxine, we're going to go to the next person and I'll get back to Maxine. Jody Costanza, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Great. I would like to thank you all, oh, I'm sorry, I'm. Yep, I'm a science teacher at West Orange High School. So I would like to thank you all for the time and energy put into creating the plan for West Orange's return. And discussing the health and safety of the staff and students as one of the top priorities. We are still learning so much about this virus and how it spreads, especially in indoor settings, since it is an aerosol virus. While it's notable that we have the new needlepoint bipolar ionization and filtration units. And appreciate the installation of these protective measures to mitigate the exposure to the virus. According to the American Society of Heating, Refrigerating, and Air Conditioning Engineers, or ASHRAI. Convincing scientifically rigorous, peer-reviewed studies do not currently exist on this emerging technology. Also, while the CDC will not make a stance for or against manufactured products. They do warn that bipolar ionization is an emerging technology and should be used with caution. Since the data is not out there to support the claims of the manufacturers. And I sent that link in an email earlier. This is a major concern with the number of cases going up in New Jersey and as others have said specifically in West Orange. At the high school, we share classrooms, workspaces, and bathrooms that would continually need to be cleaned. Where should the teachers go when another teacher is teaching in their classroom? Many proposals have been made, but not one that all teachers are comfortable with. I, as well as many of my colleagues, are still very fearful of this virus and have not been inside another building beside our home. The first time I stepped into a building since March was when I came to the high school to set up my hybrid technology. I felt very vulnerable and there were only a few people in the building. We do not know how others maintain social distancing guidelines, but some individuals who will be attending school are in various clubs, organizations, and activities. Both school and non-school related, who come in contact with others while not wearing face masks. This now puts us all at a much higher risk of contracting the virus. We have also just started getting into a flow with virtual teaching, as others have stated. And I believe it is keeping the students engaged and coming to class. With the number of students opting to stay virtual, it will be an obstacle for those students at home to have to try and learn from myself and other teachers. Teachers while we're wearing a face mask and a face shield. With the new information that comes out each. Uh, with the new information that comes out each day with this novel virus and with the increasing numbers, all of the information needs to be taken into account to make the best-informed decisions that provide the biggest reward with the least amount of risk. Um, I'm an educator because I love to teach. But from a social-emotional aspect, for myself, uh, my colleagues, as well as my students, I'm concerned with returning to in-person instruction at this, at this given time and in this given environment. As a mother and a teacher, I am concerned for the safety of myself, my child, and my family, especially my mother-in-law, who is at risk due to her age, and takes care of my daughter while I teach every day. Please take into consideration extending the virtual learning to keep all members of the faculty, staff, and community safe. Thank you again for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'm gonna try one more time, uh, with Maxine, if you can unmute yourself on the screen. Maxine, are you able to hear me? Okay, unfortunately, I'm not able to hear Maxine, so I'm gonna go to Jeremiah Salinas, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, good evening. Jeremiah Salinas, seven Crystal Ave. Uh, I'm a, uh, oral language teacher for a middle school. And we've been open, uh, about six days now. So we go virtual, uh, every Wednesday, and we have two, two groups of students that come in. One group comes in Monday and Tuesday, another group comes in Thursday and Friday. Well, within the first week of opening our schools, we already had positive cases of students and staff members, uh, in our classrooms. What, um, sometimes it's, uh, people fail to understand is if there is one individual in a classroom that tests positive, uh, everybody that came in contact with that individual has to quarantine for fourteen days. This is including staff members and students. So the potential of having a student, especially at the high school, travel from class to class, could have a serious impact on the staffing that we have at our schools. Even though your children might show up to school, they might not see the teacher at school, because the teacher has to be quarantined for fourteen days. And if another, uh, student or staff member, or any person that comes into the building, tests positive, then the protocol has to be, uh, done all over again. Now, listen, just please, listen. You failed to listen in the past. Some of you board members have failed to listen in the past to staff, to parents, to the community. Now, we're not talking about an individual employee at this time. We're talking about the lives and risking the health and safety of children every day. I was going to send my daughter into school, uh, to give her the opportunity to, uh, experience that. I've since, my family and I have, uh, taken, uh, that back, and she's going to be virtual. Because I understand that if she goes to school, she's really not going to socialize with anyone. And I know we're talking about the children need socialization, but right now, the priority is the health and safety of my family over her socializing with her friends at school. Now, nothing, absolutely nothing will ever replace having in-person instruction and live instruction. Our teachers in our district are doing the best that they can with what they have. Remember, they also have families of their own that they have to worry about. They also have children of their own that they have to worry about. Now, I don't know the amount of teachers that have already been granted medical leave, uh, based on their own personal, uh, medical reasons that they might have. But, again, just pay attention to what the people are saying here tonight, to what the parents are telling you here tonight. Don't fail. You, you, there's, i-if you fail, it's catastrophic. And, 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 and one individual, um, losing a life over opening the schools, suddenly, it, it's not worth, it's not worth it. It's not worth it.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And I'm gonna try one more time with Maxine, and then we might have to find an alternate way to get Maxine's question. Maxine, can you hear me? Oh, that's strike three. I think it might be a problem with your microphone. Um, next we have Aaron Kesselman, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Yes, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Aaron Kesselman, one Galloway Court. Um, I just wanna, like, just first off, say thank you to the board, thank you to the teachers for doing everything they can to, you know, pivot from our spring to now our, what we're currently in, which is a lot better than it was in the spring. I'm speaking more as a parent, though. Trying to manage a, you know, two parents' full-time job, you know, with my daughter and everything, it's, it's tough. And, and I get that there's, there's, there's issues with safety and everything, and everyone's worried about that. The same time, we have to try to open up, and if we don't do it now, then when? And it's just, it's, it's time we try and make sure that, that we can do something with it. Um, my son is currently in preschool, and he's doing really well. Knock on wood, nothing's happened, but he's in a hybrid model in preschool with no problem at all. Now, is there gonna be a problem? We don't know, but we need to try. And from a parent, talking to teachers and the staff, I feel like we need to try to open. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And next we have Jennifer Studnicki, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, hi, good evening. Um, I would like to, oh, Jennifer Studnicki, teacher at West Orange High School. Um, good evening. I would like to start by thanking all of you for the attention you have been providing to keep the families of your school safe during these uncertain times. I am speaking tonight to address the concern I have for reopening our school district. I, like so many of my colleagues, want nothing more than normalcy, a return to the building, the face-to-face interaction with my students, and the ability to feel safe and supported in the roles which I have dedicated my life. But like so many of my colleagues, I echo the same sentiment, only when it is safe. Over the past week, we have all witnessed the coronavirus cases surge by thousands per day, and in Essex, Union, Hudson, and Bergen counties, the positivity rate has increased to six point fifteen, um, six point one-five percent, meaning of every one hundred people who test for the virus, six are coming back positive. Essex County's infection rate is one point three percent, already higher than the state's average infection rate. On October nineteenth, Mayor Parisi posted on the town's website, "We all need to get back to stay, get back to basics, stay home whenever possible, work remote." On October twentieth, University Hospital's CEO has gone on record indicating Essex County has begun the second wave. Next to my family, my students are my first priority. I would enjoy nothing more than to teach alongside them, but with the irrefutable and overwhelming metrics and evidence, the return to our schools, especially amid the second wave, will statistically increase the spread of the virus and rate of exposure. As teachers, our primary responsibility is ensure the education of our students. This is a fact that we are all in agreement. Understanding that our students' social-emotional learning is compromised, as teachers, so many of us have rallied together to provide our students with the support they need when they need it, without question. But how effective are we as teachers when our own anxieties and apprehensions of in-person teaching remain at our forefront and have not been adequately addressed? Social-emotional support for teachers has been highly discussed but greatly overlooked. Saying the support will be provided and implementing the support are two very different things. And I don't exactly understand how the social-emotional support is valued when teachers who are medically compromised or have childcare issues are either being forced into the classroom or being forced to take leave without given the option of accommodations. When parent-provided daily health surveys are not being required as an added preventative measure to track and isolate possible outbreaks when it is an inconvenience to complete. When the PPE provided to us will not adequately last the remainder of the school year. When teacher input has been minimal and trivial to the planning and execution of the district reopening. Our students will be in the schools roughly four times a month and four and a half hours each day, whereas teachers will be expected to be in their buildings every day for the entirety of the school day. That's twenty point five hours for students versus one hundred twenty hours for teachers. Teachers are just as much stakeholders as anyone else in this situation, and we will be on the floor, the ones on the forefront frontlines each day. To know that our voices have little impact in the decision-making process speaks a volume of the social-emotional support we have been provided. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Jessie Aporta, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, uh, first, uh, thank you, Dr. Gascon, President Alper, and the rest of the board. Thus far, you've not only been willing to, uh, hear us out.
Jessie, I'm sorry, we just need the name and, and your title for the.
Yes, the board of Six Carter Road, uh, and I'm also a teacher at the high school. Like I said, so far, you guys have, have all done a wonderful job at doing the right thing, even if it's not the most popular thing. You've erred on the side of caution, and, you know, there was a quote I heard that "You may not know if you overreact, but you certainly will know if you underreact." And, and that brings up the, the issue that's at play here. Mayor Parisi, in an article written on October nineteenth by Eric Kiefer, was quoted as having said, "In addition to cooler temperatures more receptive to the virus, we are all moving around more, going to more places, and in our wish to return to normalcy, perhaps being more careless than we should be." "The entire state of New Jersey, as well as states across the country, are seeing an increase in cases and hospitalizations. Though we cannot control what happens elsewhere, we can impact what happens here and with our own lives. We all need to get back to basics: stay home whenever possible, work remote, order in, call friends rather than visiting, wash hands, use sanitizer, and if we must go out, social distance and wear a mask." I guess the question I have is this. The top elected official in our community is clearly sending out a distinct message to work remote whenever possible, to stay home whenever possible, and to not open vector points in our community, which will undoubtedly lead to an increase in cases. So, like I said in the beginning, I commend you for having made the right choice every step along the way. I understand that elections are coming up. I understand the popularity of these decisions are going to get feedback, uh, that may be negative. But realistically, you've done the right thing every step along the way. I just urge you to continue to do so. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Uh, next, it's just listed as Sarah, if you can follow the prompt on your screen. Sarah with an H.
I think that might be me.
Yes, it is you.
Okay, good. Um, this is Sarah During. I'm forty-seven Oak Ridge Row. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Um, I just wanted to give kudos to Ms. Huerta for speaking up. Um, I just wanted to say that, you know, you are not alone in struggling with virtual learning. Um, as a family with two full-time working parents, you know, both myself and my husband are expected to have meetings constantly and to go to in-person work on alternate weeks. Um, I totally understand the fear of working in person. Um, as we have both been managing that fear using many precautions since this summer, so I'm not trying to downplay that fear at all. I understand it. I do it. Um, I get that. But we absolutely would not have been able to manage virtual school without the help of our pod. And it's made up entirely of other families with, uh, two full-time working parents. I have a very compliant and conscientious fourth grader in the public schools, and it's still hard. And I can't imagine how much harder it must be for families with multiple students in West Orange Public Schools. Um, speaking of mental health, I know that many teachers have spoken about their mental health, and that breaks my heart. But there's also so many children who are suffering anxiety and depression right now due to isolation. Um, and we have to think about them as well. I heard a teacher earlier mention that the districts that decided to stay virtual, but we could also be talking about the districts that have begun, begun hybrid or full-time back in person. Some of them started in September, and they didn't have ill effects. Hundreds of districts in New Jersey: Mawa, Wayne, Hoboken, Verona, Glen Ridge, Livingston, Caldwell, Danville, Milburn, Chatham, Moore School District, Compton Plains, and nearly every single local private school. I keep hearing people say that children won't have socialization or group work within person, but that's not true. It doesn't have to be true. I know children that are full-time in person and have been since September. They have group project work, they have outdoor play, dance, lab work, in-person presentations, course, and sports in school. And knock on wood, many of those schools have had no cases. Why are we comparing ourselves to massive districts with many resource and building challenges like Newark and Patterson, and not instead aspiring towards what some local districts have done with the resources they have? We have spent more than a million dollars readying our schools for in-person. We are prepared. Our students need this. Our families need this. And I just thank the district for doing the right thing and bringing our students back to in-person safely. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, Kevin Brady, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen, and your name and address for the record, please.
Uh, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, Kevin Brady, um, sixty Wellington Avenue. So, I'm a father of three kids in the elementary school. I wanna thank everybody who spoke previously, no matter what your opinions on this are. I know it's really hard for everybody right now. And my kids are participating right now in West Orange United's travel soccer program and in the in-house league. They're also doing ice hockey, which is open for practice and games. They opened, uh, up for indoor practice and games back in mid-September and games just a week ago. And, you know, I, I really commend our district, the teachers and the administrators for all the great work that they've done so far to keep us on track for in-person learning on November ninth. Um, I think we've seen schools have proven that it's not only possible to succeed at this, but also thrive if we do the right things. So I'm really encouraged by the fact that everybody is gonna be masked. I know that I've seen it with my kids in various settings. Um, we're talking about, you know, kids being resilient when they went with virtual, and I think they'll be just as resilient when they switch to the hybrid model and adapt to new rules in school. I know that we've all been seeing people in different environments speak with masks on. Um, there's ways to do it effectively and clearly. And I know that, I know that we're better than a lot of these districts in many ways that haven't been able to pull this off yet. But I, I think it's really just about the hard work that we've done. And I think a lot of health experts agree that, that it is best for kids, if done properly, to be in-person for learning. So, you know, I applaud all the efforts that have been done to go back in person. I think we need to do everything to do to support our schools, our teachers, our parents, but most importantly, the kids. Um, and for those who are still opposed to any in-person instruction happening, I understand that. I know it's scary for a lot of people's situations. But I'd ask those people to come up with their plan for what measures we'll be abiding by to go back for in-person, because that's one thing I'm not hearing, um, is what the alternative plans are. So I commend the district for doing what they needed to do to state of that November ninth schedule. And that's all. Thanks.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Patricia Rudy. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi. Uh, we all know that the numbers.
Patricia, I'm sorry, we just need your name and address for the record.
I'm sorry, Patricia Rudy. I'm a special ed teacher at Kelly Elementary.
Okay.
We all know that the numbers in West Orange are rising, with seventy-three cases as reported by the mayor last week alone. Several districts have been closing or deciding to stay virtual. However, West Orange is still considering to go the opposite way and open up for hybrid. Hybrid sounds great. Yes, students will be able to go to school. But as said earlier, hybrid means teachers wearing masks, kids wearing masks, students not being able to get up and walk around the classroom, students not having snack, students just sitting at their desks, and being in school. That is it. No social interaction, no small group work, just sitting and listening. At least when they are home, they can see their peers on the computer together, interact with them. The teacher does not have to divide their attention between two groups of students, one at home and one in the classroom. As said by one of our speakers earlier, the question was, "Why are we risking the safety and lives of our students, teachers, and staff?" That is the best question I think we all have to ask ourselves. And for those special ed teachers and preschool teachers and support staff that have been called in since the mid-October to their classrooms to do hybrid teaching and to divert their attention and put extra time, extra hours, and risk their lives, I give them the biggest pat on the back. They have been called to do more than anyone has to do so far. And as we continue, if we are virtual, we should all be virtual. No teacher should have to risk their lives more than others. We chose special education for our students, because we love our students and we want our students to learn. We did not choose special education to be treated as guinea pigs. We do not want to be the test subject to see, let's put them in the building and see if they get sick. That's not why we became special ed teachers. We love our students. We want to see our students in the building, but we want them to be safe. We want to be safe, and we want our families to be safe. We don't want to be put at risk, because we chose to teach special education rather than general education. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And, uh, next we have, uh, it's listed as Ernestine, uh, Ernestine John. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, give us your name and address for the record. It's listed as, oh, there you are.
Hi, Ernestine John, 256 St. Cloud Elementary, I'm sorry, St. Cloud Avenue. And, and I have someone who has something to say.
My name is AZ John and I am in the fifth grade at St. Cloud. I really miss my teachers, my classrooms and learning with my friends.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, we have Joe Postleone. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, how you doing, everybody? Good evening.
Hi, can we have your name and address for the record, please?
Joe Postiglione, special education teacher, primary autistic class, Mount Pleasant Elementary.
Thank you.
I wanted to take a minute to thank everybody for their time and their efforts. All the board members, Dr. Cascone, our union, all the teachers and the parents in the town. This is a rough thing for everybody to be going through, strange times indeed. That being said, I'd like to say something that I've been thinking about since school closed back in April. To echo Ms. Rudy's comments. I got into special education because I love these students and they have deserved the right to a chance to succeed and do everything that they possibly can in the right way. And since April, I felt like I have not left my computer. And I've not done that for a reason. I want to do everything I can in my craft virtually to help not only my students at home, but my parents, especially the parents. I've tried to do everything I can to help them at home because I understand this is a very, very hard and impossible situation for everybody, including on how to work with their own children and get back to work themselves. That being said, I've spent four and a half years in the West Orange District as a paraprofessional and the other 14 years as a primary self-contained autistic teacher. And when we were told that we were going back into the building on October 12th, speaking for myself, I was very nervous for obvious reasons, but we knew that we had to give this a chance and to go the right way. And we all are back in there on behalf of all special education teachers. I thank you. And I believe that you're doing a great thing for the district. While we are in there and been trying to make this work and working on our own anxieties and worrying about how the new world exists and how these new classrooms exists. I will also say that our students that are coming in that were important to come in and had to come in essentially, I would like everybody to just try to visualize the world they're coming back into is not the way that they left. The rooms are different. We are unable to share things. They are unable to use objects. We are unable to do group work. We are unable to do most activities. We cannot do projects with them. A lot of what we did and how we did it is simply unattainable right now. And it's also not safe the closer you get in. And we do our best and we try our best because we want to be our best for this district. And we want our kids, our students, not just special education, all education to succeed. And for every other teacher coming in the next couple of weeks, I would say the same thing for them. All of us have families and loved ones that we care about. And the numbers are rising in this town and in this state, and the holidays are coming up. I implore everyone to see reason and think about these things going forward and what kind of situations we really are in while we are in school currently. It's very important to think about going forward. I realize I'm out of time. I thank everybody, but I implore you again, think about everybody, all of your staff, families, children, and what we are doing while we are in school and why we are really trying to do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next we have Susan Pasquale. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Susan Pasquale and I'm at 22 Overlook Avenue. I am a parent of two children in the school district, one with an IEP who suffers severe anxiety. I am very confused with the decision in regards to hybrid or virtual. One of my children are dying and asking me every day to go back and see her friends. The other, on the other hand, wouldn't go back again. I'm hearing all these teachers tonight begging, begging the district not to open for at least until January. Safety should be the first priority. And I'm wondering why the board members and Dr. Cascone are not listening to all these teachers begging. The numbers are going up in West Orange, and I think with the holidays coming up, why can't we wait until January to relook at this and go forward? Please listen to everyone tonight before the decision is made to go back in November. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And Jennifer Turullo, if you can please follow the prompt on your screen and your name and address for the record.
I'm a teacher at Washington Elementary School. I have a couple of points to make. First, as a fifth grade teacher, my students are really just starting to get the hang of Zoom. For instance, today I said, oh my God, they totally got the lesson yesterday. I'm so proud of them. And they're really starting to flourish. I think going into hybrid will take a couple of weeks for myself and also my students to fully grasp how to teach and learn in that model, which is wasting precious academic time that we really just don't have. Secondly, I spend a lot of time during my lesson reminding children to focus and to stay on track. That will be very difficult when fourth and fifth grade teachers have no other teacher helper in their room to help monitor the students. With hybrid, as all the other men, all the other elementary teachers have, how will I be able to focus on both groups at once? Thirdly, I'm uncomfortable going into other people's classrooms to teach. I do not feel like it is a safe option for the fourth and fifth grade teachers. I want to thank everybody for listening tonight because I know there's a lot of redundancy, but I feel like it's stuff that needs to be heard. So I just like to thank the Board of Ed, all the teachers and the parents. I do understand I'm dying to see my students. I miss them terribly, but I don't want to die to do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Carol Ann Holland. If you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi, Carol Ann Holland, 71 Lawrence Avenue. I wasn't going to speak tonight. But first I want to say thank you to all the administration and teachers and staff. You are all working so hard in impossible circumstances. And I feel for all the students who are having difficulty learning virtually. And to all the teachers, I have to say thank you. You are superheroes any year. But this year you're in a completely other realm. The one point that I want to make is as we're talking hybrid, we keep talking about kids being in-person. And I just want to remind everyone, if I'm reading this schedule correctly for November, kids, at least at the high school and middle school, out of 14 days of school will only be in-person two of those days. 12 other days, they'll still be virtual. So it's not like we have kids who are virtual and kids who are in-person. All kids are still virtual. They just have a very minimal amount of time. Eight or so hours in the month of November that they will be in-person. I just want to remind people of that, since we're all pushing so hard, we all want our kids to be back in school in a normal way, but it can't happen right now. So as you're pushing for in-person, just remember that they're still going to spend the majority of their time virtual. And the other thing I thought of today, I was so impressed. My, both of my kids had band class and I heard my son playing his euphonium for almost the entire class. I'm thinking about things like band and chorus. When kids go back, those things are much less safe to do in-person. So I'm wondering how those kinds of activities will work. And I think that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next, we have Betsy Stevens. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record.
Hi, my name is Betsy Stevens. I'm at 10 Beaumont Terrace. Okay, I couldn't tell if you could hear me.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to kind of follow up actually on what Carol Ann was just saying that we, my concern is the students, the majority of students for the majority of time will be in a hybrid situation, will be virtual. And from my experience in another school district, we are hybrid right now and I feel like I, I think it's, it's not hybrid is better. I mean, virtual is better when it's all virtual right now. Instead of seeing the teacher's face when she talks to us, we just, it's, it's her mask and she's way off in the distance and we're having a hard time hearing her. And you know, it's fine for the small number of kids who are virtual, I believe, in that particular situation. But in our situation in West Orange, it's going to be the majority of kids who are virtual. And I think it, it makes it difficult in a hybrid situation for the teacher to, to cater to the, the virtual kids, which would be the majority of ours. I also, from what I've seen from the kids who are in the classroom in the hybrid situation, it's not in the classroom what people are thinking when like my child tells me I want to go back to school. She wants to go back to the classroom where she can sit next to her friends and see her teacher up close and personal. But they're sitting rather far away from each other. It's a very sterile looking environment. There's no connections being made there. It's similar to what you would see in a remote situation, except for you happen to be in the same room. You're very far away. So with that in mind, I feel like looking out what's in best interest for the student body, I feel like staying remote would better service at this point. I also feel strongly that the teachers were asking a lot of them to put themselves at risk. And we're asking a lot of our kids to put themselves at risk and they're not really able to make these decisions for themselves, which is why we make them for them. But I think we need to consider safety when making those decisions. And lastly, I just want to say I don't envy you for having to make these difficult decisions. And I want to thank you for always putting our students' best interest at heart when you do make these decisions. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And Betsy, ignore that. I just double-clicked your, asked unmute, so you can ignore that. Sorry about that. Orianna, if you can follow the prompt on your screen.
Hi, can you hear?
Yes, thank you. Your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Orianna Palumbo, 33 Baxter Lane. Thank you all of you for staying on target for the November 9th date. I'm so relieved it's going to happen and was very worried that it wouldn't. It's upsetting to hear the teachers wanted to leave till January. I do understand their worries, but what does January change? We've already put it off two months. Our kids are only learning for half days. There's so much education that's been missed. How is their curriculum being taught completely? When they've only been in half days for the past two months? I understand what happened in the spring. None of us had control over it. It was awful. I'm so happy to see everyone's doing Zoom and it's working and it's so much better than it was. But we all know it doesn't compare to in-person learning. And we see the difference the teachers make in person. And of course, yes, it's not going to be as great as it was, but it's better than what we're doing now. And how can we not try it? How with all the time and effort and money that's been put into the air systems and making everything happen and all the logistics, how do we not try it? Now that we're only two weeks away and so close, how can we move it even further to January? For the first time, my kids' public school education, I'm contemplating private and I'm disgusted at having to do that because I'm not willing to accept that my kids are just I'm at the mercy of, you know, the district and the town of them keep putting it off. This is their education. This should be a priority. My child can go to camp in the summer. He can work in an arcade on the boardwalk, but he can't go to school? Like it, it, we, we need to make this happen in two weeks. And I'm so happy to see we're on target and it's going to happen. And I would hate to see it pushed even further to January. I thank you so much for everything you've done to stay on target and keep us there. And it's, we're almost there. I really hope it happens and don't want to see that fall apart and push to January. Thank you so much again.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. And next we have Lisa Rodino. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Hi, my name is Lisa Rodino and I am a teacher at Washington School. I have been listening to everyone speak and I, I too am thankful to the board and Dr. Cascone and the administration for being so supportive and being so present and giving us so much feedback in terms of how we're going to go forward in these, you know, crazy unprecedented times. I love to teach. I miss my students. I love to teach so much that I volunteered at the start of school to teach from my classroom. I taught from my classroom because I thought it would provide my students with a more meaningful experience. I felt it would feel more authentic for them and I would have access to more of my material. So win-win for everyone. There were very few teachers in my school and I felt very safe every day when I entered the building. My temperature was taken. I filled out a contact tracing form. I went to my classroom. I saw very few people. And I was really, really happy until September 30th, when I was informed that I was exposed to a virus. I was sent home. I was completely fine. I had zero fear because I had seen barely, I barely saw anyone and had minimal exposure. When I spoke to my school nurse, she said to me, Lisa, how long were you in contact with your colleague? 10 minutes, 15 minutes? And I said, I honestly don't know. Definitely 10 minutes, maybe 12 minutes. I don't know, but I definitely should be quarantined. Friday, October 2nd, my symptoms hit. I was so sick, so, so sick. We were distant. We were masked and I am still recovering and it is week three. My husband, who has asthma and is five years older than I am, is still recovering because I obviously spread the disease to my husband. This is, this is not a choice. I agree with, I understand everyone's position. I don't want to teach from home. I don't, I want to get back to school. I'm a special educator. My children need me, like several of my colleagues. I, I answered a call while I'm on this Zoom from one of my students. They call my cell phone. They text me questions. I'm on call 24/7. I know that it is so imperative to get back to school. I am so lucky that I am alive. My husband is alive. This, this is not a maybe. This is a, we can't risk it. You have to consider our safety and the safety of our children and the safety of our administrators. This is, it's not the time. The time now is to stay put and wait. West Orange cases are on the rise. It makes zero sense. Thank you so much for listening.
Thank you. Robin Isar, Robin Isarless, if you can follow the prompt on your screen, please.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, Robin Isarless, 22 Yale Terrace. Thank you, everyone. I don't want to repeat the many important insights, reflections and fears we've heard thus far because it's getting late. What I am struck by is a numbers issue. I think it's important for us to compare ourselves not to smaller public or private schools that have opened and can possibly manage thus far. Though we'll see what happens as the COVID numbers begin to surge again in the state. West Orange is a large district and we are blessed in so many ways by this size and the opportunities that it brings. At this time though, our size may not be an asset in the question of whether to open and when. It is clear that the in-person classroom that we are creating for this pandemic, while possibly the best we could offer is offer is so far from ideal. I'd like to just ask this very simple question of Dr. Cascone and the Board of Ed members. I know that as shepherds of our district, you must respond to the multiplicity of opinions and situations of all in our community. But right now, in this moment, if you were teachers in West Orange, what would you be saying at the microphone tonight and requesting of the Board of Ed? We have come this far with such caution and deliberation. It seems an odd turn to not do so right now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And next, it's just listed as Monica. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and give us your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, I'm Monica Nieves for Robertson Road, West Orange.
Thank you.
I think I have an interesting perspective. I am a teacher in a public school in Essex County. And I have been teaching a hybrid model since September 1st in person. I have about 275 students this year. It's definitely been a challenge. The kids are masked. I'm in a mask. We have plastic barriers. I was extremely nervous to go back. It has definitely been an adjustment. I'm not going to say that it's easy, but I will say that the kids are very happy to be back in. I'm happy to be back. I've asked the kids, you know, do they prefer coming in or being at home because they come in every other day? And I'm going to say about 90% of them are happy to be back. So far, it's going very smoothly. And I just think, you know, we've, we, we have a plan. We've spent money. I think we need to go through with following with the hybrid model. I think our kids need to go back. I understand the concerns for many, but we do have the options of having our kids stay virtual. My other concern is I don't feel like the kids are getting enough education in this current model with the four classes a day. I don't understand why there isn't live teaching going on on Fridays. I'm very concerned about my kids' education. I do not feel like they are getting the full education that they should be getting. And I too am considering private school, which is very upsetting to me because I've been very, very happy with the education my kids have received. So I would like to see us continue with the November 9th plan. I'd like to see, like I said, even the Fridays be a factor. So kids could be going in more. And I just think it needs to be considered. Other districts are doing it and we can do it too. And for the teachers, I understand your fears. I get it because I felt the same way. But whether we do it now or in January, we're going to have to face those fears and we're going to have to learn this new model. And I'm not going to say it's easy. I mean, I've been exhausted, but it's, it's worthwhile. And I think it's what has to happen for the sake of our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. At this time, do we have anyone else who would like to speak on agenda items with the raise your hand feature? Okay, thank you, Sharon. If you can follow the prompt on your screen and name and address for the record.
Sharon Ortiz, 6 Little F. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. And I speak tonight as a dedicated teacher at the high school and a 19-year resident in this amazing West Orange community. First and foremost, I'd like to thank our superintendent and Board of Ed for being at the forefront and keeping our schools closed and our students, staff and community safe. I'd like for you to know that we are giving all our time, strength and energy to our students and making sure that they are emotionally well and receiving the very best education possible at this time. Tonight I come to you because I am worried. The COVID-19 cases are surging around the nation and state and especially here in West Orange. The governor has extended the state of emergency for 30 more days citing our infection rates, which has surpassed even our highest numbers. New Jersey school districts are opening and closing so quickly, it's hard to keep up. The last time I checked, we were up to 30 school districts that have paused in-person learning, some in as little as two days to one after students returned. Thirty-two high school football games were canceled or postponed because of outbreaks last Friday. Livingston being one of those teams as their entire football team is just leaving quarantine. I also personally know Livingston teacher who at this very moment is in quarantine after their co-teacher tested positive. Even though schools that have remained open after each outbreak has them switching back and forth in person to virtual so often, it has to be a disruption to the learning process. I'm so worried about my health, my colleagues who are single parents and those with small children who are afraid and anxious about having to quarantine away from their babies. I am so worried that the connections that I've built with my students and the quality of instruction that I have worked so hard will suffer despite my best efforts in this hybrid model. We, the teachers are in survival mode and doing the very best that we can. We want the best for our students, our families, our colleagues and our community. We want to feel safe. We want to feel supported. We want to know that someone is advocating for us. Can we please focus on continuing to do a great job teaching remotely rather than putting everyone at risk in what looks like the beginning of the perfect storm? I respectfully ask that we follow the science. Reconsider and please institute a January start date. Thank you and be safe.
Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Next person is just listed as Dee Kelly. If you can follow the prompt on the screen and give us your name and address for the record. The Zoom name is listed under Dee Kelly, one word, D K E L L Y. Follow the prompt on your screen. Going once. Dee Kelly? Okay, if we have anybody else at this time? Uh, nope. And that's it for public comment.
Great. Seeing them, we'll close that section. Dr. Cascone.
Thank you, Mr. Uper. Thanks to all of our attendees and for your, your feedback and your comments. A lot to process, a lot of good questions, some, some that are readily answerable and others which will continue to be focuses of conversation, dialogue, debate. I am going to go through as many of the comments and questions as I can, you know, as this will be a video recording and can ultimately be posted for the public to view. I think for the edification of those who were not here and of course, those who are still here and ask the questions, I think I'm going to go through with as many of these as I can. So starting with the question about, about two days, yes, the, the time on site will continue to be two days per week for all students on the elementary level. That's every week. On the secondary level, that is every other week. If you, if you opt for transportation and choose to transport your child, you would not lose transportation. Your child just would not be transported on that day. Calendars, the calendars, we recently cleaned up the helpful links section of the homepage. There is a calendars link under helpful links under the homepage. And in fact, the, the most up-to-date calendar is there. There had been a, an older calendar, the previous calendar, that was, that was accessible if you searched in the search field on the website. It would pull up from a previous announcement, a previous calendar. That link has since been deactivated. It'll still take you there, but there will not be any calendar there. So most up-to-date calendar that was adopted, I believe in August by the board, is available right there on the district website, the district master calendar. Thank you for those comments about liberty and West Orange High School schedules and power school. I've made note to follow up with those, those principles. You know, speaking to kind of the, the value of the hybrid model and, and you know, for the, you know, several hundred districts that are doing that. And, and I have a kind of a perspective on that as a parent, because my, my three daughters are currently engaging in the, in a hybrid model and have been doing so really since the beginning of September. And to be honest with you, they don't love either. You know, they're not jumping up and down about virtual or hybrid, but they're also not complaining about going into school. And, and I do really believe that for, for kids, and even though this may be a limited amount of time, I believe that that process, getting on the bus, that process of striding through the, the entrance to the school of, again, I said at the last board meetings, you know, hearing Mr. Moore's, just as an example, voice on the loudspeaker, you know, seeing your teacher in person. A computer screen does not replicate that. And yes, will it be the same in person? No, will there be as much social interaction? Or will there be no social interaction? I would disagree with that. I think that the trainings that we're providing to teachers and were, you, one of the videos that we're using for that is the Cornell video, there very much can be turn and talk. Like I can see Mr. Rothstein, he's about six feet from me right now. And, and Mr. Rothstein and I can engage in a conversation. Mr. Rothstein can regale me with one of his witty quips from that distance and I can listen to that and enjoy it. So I mean, that can still happen from a distance. So I didn't mean to be glib and I, I suppose I'm doing that a lot of that lately is just trying to use humor to keep us all in relatively good spirits. But there, there will be social interaction. There can be some form of group work. And of course, we'll get better at that as time goes on. You know, it's interesting, the, the idea of a student, a producer, if you will, in the class actually came out of a site visit we conducted to Kushner Academy. Mr. Calavano and I went and visited Kushner Academy and we appreciated our, our hosts there as they've been full in person since the beginning of the year. And we just wanted to learn something, whatever we could from them and their implementation. And they actually recommended that. And I actually would disagree with, with the person who raised, with the teacher who raised that, that point about that, because we, we empower students all the time in our classrooms with jobs. I mean, this is, this is one of the things, whether it's the, you know, the, the elementary kids, we used to, they used to bring the lug, the milk, the lunch money, the milk, the milk, the milk money down to the main office, whatever the case may be. It's, it's a great strategy and there are kids who are ready, able and equipped to actually play that role. And in fact, it would actually facilitate their engagement to do so. So I mean, of course, we're entitled to our opinions, but I think that that's actually a fairly constructive strategy and seemed to work pretty well at Kushner. Relative to teachers in other districts who are struggling with hybrid instruction, not surprised because they got thrown into it with no professional learning whatsoever from day one. So that's not to say that it's going to be perfect from day one for us, but we, 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 we delayed for a variety of reasons. And one of the ancillary reasons was because we wanted to have time to prepare our teachers. Now, has it been extensive? Have we had extensive? No, but we've had opportunities to technically front load that, to orient them to what that process is. We're bringing teachers in in a staggered fashion to help them orient to their classrooms. And we've, and we've provided, we've, we've invested and you'll see on this board agenda, thousands of dollars into, into creating stipended ed tech specialist positions specifically to provide ongoing support to teachers in this building to work through this hybrid model. So I would argue that our teachers will be far better equipped to engage in that than teachers who are simply thrown into it in day one with little to no preparation or professional development. Food will not be eaten in the classrooms. So that would not be a concern for our allergy parents and students. Relative to Ms. Huertas' question, Ms. Huertas' question about the clubs, I, I love our, I love our community. I love the critical lens. I love that people are paying attention. But in this particular case, there's a logical explanation for it, which is that some of our principals have been a little bit more expeditious in their submission of clubs than others. And as opposed to delaying, and that was a question that we considered, should we wait till all of them are in? And we said, well, why should we hold up the schools that are prepared until the other ones are ready? So at some point in time, sooner rather than later, probably at the next board meeting, you'll see clubs from all the different schools. I'd like to speak specifically to Mr. Leach's, you know, position on his, on his room. I did check our, our spreadsheet that I have on our HVAC inventories and room 1154 does have a UNIVENT and was slated to receive a BPI bipolar ionization unit. Now, that could have very well happened and you wouldn't necessarily have known that because it's a mechanism that's installed inside the UNIVENT. But for this purpose, I think the walkthroughs, which we'll be scheduling with, with W O E A Executive Board and Health and Safety Committee members will be helpful. So we can walk through all these classrooms and independently demonstrate that the work's been completed. As far as the, the purifying units, I do believe that you're looking at the wrong unit. I did actually meet with Mr. Maniscalco and the two chairpersons of the Health and Safety Committee. Those are two-year HEPA filters. They are two-year HEPA filters on those EnviroCleanse units. And, and, and so that, and would, would address that concern because if we had to replace them every three or four months, that could be a hardship, both logistically and from a financial standpoint. But that's not the case. Two-year filters on those. And the window, right. So I think the other thing I want to remind folks of is, is that we have pandemic response teams in all the buildings. And this is a perfect, one of the functions that a pandemic response team can, can serve is, right? So if you're a teacher, it's like, hey, you have a window that does work. Unacceptable. All the window repairs should have been done by now. And if they're not, they need to be done and we'll need to get vendors in immediately, whenever that needs to happen in order for those to be fixed. So if you have as staff members concerns about your room, bring them to the attention to your designee in your building. All buildings have a Health and Safety Committee designee. If you're not sure who that is, you can reach out to your building principal. They know. I shared those names with the building principals and/or your executive board who forwarded those names to me. I, I would politely disagree with the characterization of band-aiding the ventilation. I would, I, I mean, and it's not simply, hey, it was a lot of money, so it's not a Band-Aid. But you know, we spent over approximately $800,000 on either the units or the technology itself. And relative to no empirical data, I did share with the, with Mr. Maniscalco and the chairs of the Health and Safety Committee, actual, actual empirical scientific study that was done with BPI and COVID. Now granted, BPI is relatively new and COVID-19 is even newer. So you know, there's not going to be an expansive longitudinal body of research supporting that. But the studies that have been done more recently have been empirically proven by, to, to reduce that. And you know, I would, you know, I can't forward that to the staff or you can request that of Mr. Maniscalco and the Health and Safety Committee because they are in possession of that empirical report, which I had forwarded to them. You know, we do have presently 3,836 students who, to date, you know, and whose parents, you know, have onboard to send their, their children into school. And, and you know, they're, they're coming in full disclosure in terms of what that involves, you know, that that's going to involve masks and that's going to involve wiping down their desk and, and, and so on and so forth. And so, you know, at the end of the day, every one of those children, those families have a decision that they're going to make, whether they, they're comfortable with that, whether they're comfortable with the degree of social interaction or lack thereof. Right presently, we have almost 4,000 students whose families have, you know, voluntarily agreed to do. And I just, I, I just want to call attention to that because as the superintendent, you know, I, and, and as many of you have noted in the board, you know, we, we are here at the will of the entire community and, and, and have to walk that balance in, 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 in acting on the will of, of the full community. You know, as far as the robocall from, from, from Mayor Perry Seaman, and you know, and I, I didn't get it initially. I've, I've since been added to the robocalls, which I'm happy about. You know, that's good to get that information. And, and you know, first, like, I just kind of heard like scuttlebutt about it. And, and you know, when I, when I went back and I read the transcript of it, I, I think that it was, it was a, a message that, 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 you know, I think that the mayor felt needed to go out. I, I think it's a message to us all about continuing to be smart about discretionary activities, right? I think that's the takeaway about, you know, that discretionary, things that are not absolutely necessary are things that we need to really reconsider doing and things that are essential, you know, to do those as safely as possible, but not to be, you know, frivolous in the way we go about our personal business, because that can only exacerbate this. I just want to clarify that all offices are having BPI installed in them, whether by virtue of the UNIVENTS and HVAC systems in there or through a mobile purification unit. And so far as the hallways go, you know, the, the hallways, the, the amount of time that we're going to have folks in the hallways, I mean, our, our buildings, in the elementary schools, the students will not be moving at all. In the middle schools, they will be, but we're talking about now a very significantly small number of students for a relatively short period of time. And when you think about, think about the, the exposure criteria, I'm walking down the hallway, I pass a student. According to the CC, CDC guidelines, you know, that doesn't qualify as an exposure. So no one that's in the hallways is going to be, is going to be, you know, in proximity to a person long enough for that to be considered as an exposure. And again, I mean, coming back to that idea of like masks, right? Like distancing, all these things that the CDC, and people say, well, listen to the science. Well, we are listening to the science. We're, you know, we're, all of our health and safety protocol are aligned with what the CDC, you know, Dr. Fauci, the government, what these people are telling us are necessary to maintain a, a degree of, of health and safety. I, I am dismayed to hear that we had teachers coming in and that, that the, the supplies that should have been in your classrooms were not. I can assure you that we have ordered copious amounts of PPE. We have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on PPE, on hand sanitizer, just got another $6,000 supply of a pallet of hand sanitizer. We have plenty of it as far as the gowns. And by the way, I'd like to give a shout out publicly to St. Barnabas Medical Center. They donated a thousand medical gowns. We have more on They donated a thousand medical gowns. We have more on order. We have more gloves on order. Anything that is needed will, will be there and we'll continue to order that as we understand, you know, the usage, right? And I just want to, I want to talk about that because it's very hard when we're trying to balance our resources, right? You know, we, we don't want in a vacuum without any real, real ability to prognosticate how many we'll need. You know, and then all of a sudden we end up three months from now, we have these things sitting in warehouses going bad, right? So we have enough to get started. What we're going to do is understand and measure our usage by week, by month, and then be able to kind of predict out what we'll need for the remainder of the year and then order those with, with, with a greater degree of accuracy and not squandering the limited resources that, that we have. As far as the dividers go, you know, and, you know, and I, it was interesting, it was a school boards conference. I know Mr. Alper attended it. His past week was the school boards convention virtually. And I imagine some of the board members will probably chat a little bit about some of the workshops they attended. But, you know, some of these, many of these barriers, you know, are, are not, are not fire graded, are not, are not up to code as far as being fire retardant, inflammable, you know, and, and fire resistant and are actually hazardous on some level. But more than that, because that was just a sidebar tangent, is, is we, we already are six feet apart and universal masked. Now, if we were talking about maybe three or four feet apart and we were able to get more students in and maybe we were saying, you know what? If you're distanced, you don't need masks, but we're going full protocol here. We're going six feet. We're going, everybody's in masks all the time. So now we're going to do on top of that, now I'm going to put a divider in front of a kid with a mask on that's six feet from everybody else. You know, it's not required. And ultimately, when you talk about that normalcy of the environment, we aired away from that. Not for the classes where our teachers or situations where teachers and students need to be working in closer proximity based upon the needs of the students. In those classrooms or special services department, we have ordered those dividers for those classrooms. Relative to a third-party evaluation of our HVAC, I mean, we have, we have an architects and engineers of record. That is, that is a third party. You know, that's, that's, you know, they, they are licensed, they're professional credibility. Their legitimacy with us and so far as our architect, board-approved architects of record is, is on the line with this. And these, this, this group of architects and engineers assessed and evaluated our entire HVAC system as part of the referendum. They did another round, visited every single classroom, every single space, created an inventory for every single classroom of what it had, what it needed. By the way, those spreadsheets have been shared with the W O E A executive board, with the chairs of the Health and Safety Committee. Full disclosure, they've seen what we've seen. And I've offered to show, share with them the schematics and the, and the blueprints if they were interested in that as well. You know, as far as, you know, these ideas of kind of bathrooms and, and where you go during preps, to me, these are, these are questions because they're nuanced by building. And so these are questions that I really think teachers and staff members need to be vetting through your pandemic response teams. You know, and if, you know, and, and, and really kind of beat that up and understand, you know, what the options are. I mean, the high school is a large building with a lot of space and there's going to have a fraction of the students that are typically in it. I would think that there is ample space with some proper thought of where, of what could serve as kind of a socially-distanced teacher's lounge if it was necessary. And so I would recommend running those kinds of questions to the pandemic response team if, if they have not been brought to resolution at this point. Yeah, I mean, I, I would echo the idea of, and it's, it's a tough situation because there's significant needs and concerns on both sides of the coin. But, you know, I, I want to share something with the community here. You, you may be aware that we recently secured a partnership with Gaggle and let her went home about that. And Gaggle is really, is a filter, is kind of a, is a filtering software that, that oversees our Google environment. And so if there are troublesome keywords or that students are using in Gmail or in Google Docs or searches and things of that nature. And I tell you, I, since we've, since we've gotten up and running on that system, I've, I've seen in the last several days at least six or seven concerning contents that were related specifically to harm. Yeah, to self, to self-harm, right? So our kids, there's needs out there. Our kids are hurting out there. And, you know, will two days a week onsite make a difference? You know what? I, I don't know. But certainly being isolated at home is taking its toll and its impact on, on kids. And so I just think it's the counter, it's a counterbalance there that, that we need to keep in mind. I, I would respectfully disagree with, you know, the staff member that talked about minimal teacher input. I mean, I think that our, our approach and our plan since last March has been heavily driven by just, just deference. And, and, you know, and, and in some ways rightful deference to our troops, to our folks who are out there doing the job. I mean, look at last spring, it would have been very easy for us to say, hey, you have to video conference. But we knew people weren't comfortable with that. So we aired, we aired away from it because we knew we would have inconsistencies and we wouldn't be comfortable with that. When it came to putting the brakes on the September start, that was driven by the health and safety, but also with an understanding that we had not had adequate time to really prepare our teachers. We have done surveys. We have done listening sessions, you know, listening sessions. We have worked through our pandemic response teams. We're doing a superintendent's, you know, staff Q and A next week. I, I would say that, and, and in general, my message to the administrative team as it relates to things like student growth objectives and PDPs is let's be mindful of the fact that teachers have a lot on their plates. I can tell you that is consistently a focus and, and the tone of our administrative meetings as it relates to how we're working with teachers. I did make a note about that though, because, you know, if there's more we can do deliberately from a social emotional support standpoint, you know, we can. And so I'm going to follow up on that point and see if we can leverage the platform, teacher coach a little bit more robustly to, you know, to, to help folks who need it. Yeah, you know, I, I feel obliged to, to address the, the commentary regarding, you know, the, the assertion that, that I, the board and the administration were using special education teachers as guinea pigs. I, I think that's, you know, with all due respect, I think to make that statement publicly is, is irresponsible. But let me, let me talk a little bit about, about that and, and, and so the community can understand what our process was there with, with our, our teachers. You know, we, we always talked about the idea of that, you know, and if, if we were going to bring teachers in, in the opening weeks of school in advance of November 9th, we were only going to do so when we felt that there were essential functions that needed to be performed. And so over the course of the first four or five weeks, as we saw our autistic students, our, you know, our parents of autistic students, we said, you know what? We, there's an urgency to get these students in earlier because they need us. They need their teachers onsite. That, that, that was, that was communicated to teachers at least two weeks in advance. I know Mrs. Gogody Fitzgerald personally met with the teachers. We were very open, very receptive to questions, to concerns. Ensured that the equipment teachers had was in place, ensured that all those rooms had their HVAC and/or purification device installed in advance. Paid teachers additional hours to come in over the weekend to get their classrooms in order. So to suggest A, that we were using them as guinea pigs, B, that we did not provide adequate support in advance of that. I, I, I just think is disingenuous and, and is, is necessitated some, some, some counterpoints there. That being said, I certainly do respect Mr. Postiglione's, you know, points relative to the level of, of stress and anxiety there. But would have to differ relative to that other point. You know, relative to, you know, to, to safety, you know, I, I think, I think the thing about, about is we, we are in, in, in determining how we're opening our buildings, you know, we're not just, we're not just spitballing this thing, you know? We're, we're, we've been given detailed protocols and guidelines and considerations from the State Department of Health, from the Center for Disease Control, from the, from the DOE. And, and, and that's, and, and we're following that. Now, when Governor Murphy said, well, you know, if you can't certify the health and safety of your buildings, then, then, then you are authorized to not open. And that's in essence why we didn't, because at that point in time, as the superintendent, there were glaring, glaring inadequacies that, that, by which I could not justifiably make that statement that we, we could certify the health and safety building. But, but what I can certify now is that we can open in alignment with the guidelines and the, and protocols that we have been provided by the health, the public health and the scientific and the medical community. And so how as a superintendent, as a board with, you know, almost 4,000 students whose parents want them to come in and now aligned with the, the specifications and the protocol that we've been told we need to do in order to open, on what basis do we at this point in time not do that, right? Do we not give this, give this a go? And, you know, that kind of, that brings us tonight, to tonight, but obviously it's an evolving situation. I, you know, on two levels. One, it's an evolving situation relative to the extent to which this situation worsens. And, and the, and the guidelines become such where the governor says, look, we're going virtual. It's a statewide, statewide call. And also, once we get in, the degree to which the operations are so disrupted that it becomes counterproductive. I mean, what I can tell you is, is that we will continue to evaluate along the way every day and, and, and determine whether a pivot or a change in direction is needed. And that is, that is all I have, Mr. Alper.
All right. Um, yeah, you know, I, I want to echo a lot of what you said. You know, I want to thank everyone for their comments. You know, there's some really, some excellent points there. You know, a couple of things that I would like to come, you know, just highlight. You know, as someone said earlier, I'd use caution in comparing West Orange to other districts. You know, from the start, when we decided that we were going to take spring break a week early so that we could prepare to start the initial virtual instruction in the spring. You know, when we started fall virtual instruction a week later than we initially thought we were going to, so that we could get some PD in there before we began in September. You know, I definitely wouldn't compare West Orange to Newark or Patterson. You know, we're not them, you know, we're not, thank God, you know, South Orange. You know, we, we, we're West Orange and we've been extremely deliberate in our road back plans. You know, that doesn't mean that we're somehow magically immune to the virus or anything like that. But, you know, or the, there aren't reasons to be, you know, I think to some extent, you know, a bit anxious. But, you know, we've taken our time and we're, I think, doing it as rightly as possible and following the best scientific advice there is on this. And, you know, I have confidence in the approach that West Orange is taking here. You know, you know, ultimately, I think it's important to remember that, you know, we collectively do, as Dr. Kascone said, answer to the will of, and maybe more importantly, to the needs of the entire community, right? And, you know, the, the, the 30 or so people who we will hear from in a meeting like this, you know, can't possibly represent every perspective in town. So I think it's just important that we keep that in mind and realize, you know, most of us are relatively fortunate and, you know, able to, you know, do our work and, you know, at the same time, one way or the other, make sure that our kids are getting their school done. And not everyone is in such a good situation and, you know, we, there, there's other perspectives than the ones we hear and we have to just keep that in mind. So, you know, I know how frightening this can be. I know how nerve-wracking this can be, but I also do very much believe in the approach that we've been taking. And, you know, I think that we're, you know, following the right path here. And I, you know, looked to Dr. Kascone for, you know, continued guidance on, you know, what the scientists are telling us and what our environmental situation is. And, you know, where we are with the needlepoint bipolar ionization and everything else we need to make sure that we're ready to go. The PPE that we know that we've been ordering, the face shields, you know, which I think alleviates some of the concerns maybe about not seeing faces. You know, there, there's, you know, it's getting late and I don't want to go through too much of it, but, you know, I think there's, you know, I think we're in really good shape. And I'm, you know, glad to see the progress we've been making and I think we're on the right path here. With that, I think before we go on to the rest of the agenda, I think what we'll do is we'll take a short, let's say five to 10-minute tops break here, and then we'll resume with the rest of the agenda, just because it's been a long meeting. And I think we could use a couple of minutes if that works for everyone. All right.
Okay, thank you. You guys can turn off your video and mute yourselves. And then when you're ready to come back on, you can turn on your video. Take a short break. Thank you.
All right, resuming personnel. May I have a motion for personnel items one through five?
Moved.
Second.
All right, we'll highlight, we've got a number of retirements here. Mr. Calavano, Nancy Donnelly over at the high school, Susan Dyer, Michelle Zimmerman, Mike Hanley and Kathy McCormick. Congratulations to everyone and best wishes. Any discussion? Seeing none. Mr. Calavano, let's vote.
This is Mark Linger.
Yes, except I took abstain on. Is it a three I?
This is Wolfstein.
Yes.
This is Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes, grudgingly with the Calavano retirement there. Curriculum and Instruction Items One through Six, may I have a motion?
So moved.
A second.
Any discussion? All right, reminder to abstain from your own items on number one, folks. Mr. Calavano.
This is Mark Linger.
Yes, with abstaining on myself on number one.
Mr. Wolfstein.
Uh, yes, and also abstaining on my own self.
This is Tony Cliff.
Yes, with abstention on myself.
Vice President Trig Scales.
Yes, abstaining on myself, number one.
President Alper.
Yes, abstaining on myself. Next, Finance, Special Services Items One through Six and Business Office Items One through Eight, may I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
Right, like to highlight, we're accepting a couple of donations. Thank you to Frank Hughes and Faisal Khan for those. Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, Mr. Calavano.
This is Mark Linger.
Yes.
Mr. Wolfstein.
Yes.
This is Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Mr. Alper, you're muted.
Oh, sorry. Happens to everyone eventually. Reports, item one, may I have a motion?
I'll move.
Second.
All right, Mr. Calavano.
This is Mark Linger.
Yes.
This is Wolfstein.
Yes.
This is Tony Cliff.
Yes.
Vice President Trig Scales.
Yes.
President Alper.
Yes. All right, next, petitions and hearings of citizens. Three minutes at the mic for any topic you'd like. Again, we'll need your name and address.
Okay, so once again, it's the raise your hand button at the bottom of your screen. And for our attendees that are calling in, it's star nine and you just have to push it once and I'll put you right in the queue. Okay, Melinda Huerta, if you can, follow the prompt on your screen.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi, good evening. Melinda Huerta, 17 Park Drive South, West Orange. I did want to thank the board again, thank Dr. Kascone. And I wanted to ask about the Rutgers program Dr. Kascone had brought up last time, some progress on it. When would more information be available to the parents? I haven't really seen anything on that for our families who have language barriers and really need that communication between the administration and, and the parents. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will call myself out by being muted myself, so it doesn't just happen to you, it also happens to me. If there anyone else out there using that raise your hand button at the bottom of your screen? And there's no more takers.
All right, Dr. C.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Alper. Thank you, Mrs. Huerta. So our, actually it's serendipitous that you asked that question this evening because our liaison from Rutgers actually starts tomorrow. Though Mr. Plata has been convening the bilingual family resource committee on, on two occasions. Actually, the, the November 2nd Town Hall was, was something that came out of the meetings. That, that group has set some, some goals. And I just want to see if I can pull them up quickly if I can find them. I don't want to spend too much time, but they have set some specific goals for that committee. And I think that the, you'll start to see that work be, be pushed out more frequently now that we have our liaison officially starting tomorrow and we're onboarding him. So definitely things coming, starting with the Town Hall on November 2nd.
Fantastic. Fantastic. All right, Board Member Reports, Mr. Rothstein, anything new?
A few things new. First, I just wanted to, to begin by acknowledging the, um, the intensity and, and the, the pain and conflict that we listen to in the public comments, uh, session. I know we've all heard, um, so much from so many different people in the, in the public. And, uh, you know, we, we speak with our neighbors and with our friends and we hear from, uh, from so many people. And there's, there's just different sides and there's a lot of intensity on this. And without really going into too, too much detail that wouldn't be particularly helpful anyway, I just wanted to, to say, because I, I heard from some people who spoke a concern about whether we're listening. We are listening, we do hear you. We hear all of you, which is what the job is here. And there are no easy answers and we're concerned for the safety of our students and of our faculty. And, um, doing our best to follow the path, um, that seems the path that will best serve the public. So thank you all for participating. We feel the concern that you have and we're with you and doing our best for our students. Um, I wanted to, um, speak very briefly because I would imagine other members will speak as well about the, um, New Jersey School Board Association's Virtual Workshop, which, um, I believe all of us attended, um, this past week, um, or last week. It was, um, really incredible. I've spoken before about NJ SBA and how much I've learned as a board member through this, um, organization. Just a few, there were three days of eight hours of sessions, back to back, no breaks. It was really grueling. So much valuable and incredible information. And I'll just share some of the topics of courses that, uh, that I attended. Courses on COVID-19, of course, the hybrid model, remote models, finance, social and emotional learning, uh, legis, a legislative update from legislatures and senators in New Jersey, equity in education, diversifying, uh, the teacher workforce, technology. And, um, uh, the best of all of them, a presentation on the Amistad, uh, Commission Education with our own Terry Trigg Scale, who was terrific, really, uh, so great. Terry, you let me know that you were going to be, uh, speaking on this. And I thought with as many people speaking, you would have a small role. You were, you owned that whole presentation and were terrific. So you, you made us, uh, look good, so thank you. And, and that's it. So thank you also to the public for supporting us and being able to attend this and learn how to better serve you from, from this role on the board. That's it.
Great, um, state renowned Ms. Trigg Scales.
Can you see me blushing? Mr. Rothstein, thank you so much. Uh, now, I, I don't know what to say, I'm all flustered. I, I want to truly welcome our liaisons. They are probably off working now, but what a delight. Such brilliance and, uh, intuition and sensitivity. I, I am just so inspired by our young people. I just feel like the world's going to be a much better place because they're in it. Uh, we've sort of made a mess of it and so I'm looking forward to them cleaning it up for us. So thank you, Olivia and Andre. As Mr. Rothstein said, you know, we're, we're definitely listening. This is the most vexing, worrisome, um, period of time for, for superintendents, for, for members of the board. I'm currently working in a school. I, I currently hear the teachers up close and personal. I heard all the teachers tonight. I know exactly where you're coming from. I also know that there are families out there who, who want and need for their children to get back in school. We've done everything that we know to do to make the environment safe. Can we guarantee that it's 100% safe? Of course we can't, of course we can't. But do we need to at least try? Not at the expense of anyone's life or anyone's health or safety. But we've done what we were asked to do. And that is to make the school safe enough for our staff and our students to return. Can something happen in the next day, the next two or three days? Absolutely. But at this point in time, we are poised to open on November 9th. Waiting until January, I think I understand that. I, I think we've heard so much about the flu season connecting with COVID. We're seeing the uptick in numbers. We understand that. Right now, my heart is just pumping so hard because I, I have a foot over here and I have a foot over here. Wanting to do the right thing, wanting to do the smart thing. And it's, it's difficult for us if you think it's not. I'd gladly switch places with you right now and, and have you feel what I'm feeling, have you feel what we're all feeling. It, it's, it's very worrisome, it's very anxiety producing. Dr. Kascón and his staff have done a phenomenal, a phenomenal job. We are being looked up to in the county for all the steps that we've taken, for being in the front, for being leaders. There are school districts that are making it work in hybrid. Then there are school districts who have started and have had to stop. Will we start and have to stop? Probably, probably. But I think that we should at least make our, our best effort, um, to provide an education for our students. Mr. Calavano, oh, who says you can retire? Did you get our permission?
He, he just did.
They, we say it was okay, really.
Unanimously, in fact.
Yeah, we did vote yes, didn't we? The other thing I just wanted to mention was, um, you know, we're coming up on the budget season. And I keep asking about our own Board of Ed evaluation. I'm, I'm very anxious for us to evaluate ourselves, um, and, and talk about the job that we said we were going to do and, and how we've measured up. So I hope that that, that time is coming close for us. And then, um, talking about, um, the Amistad presentation, I, I was asked by Mr. James Harris, who's president of the New Jersey Black Educators Association, if I would join him and one of the commissioners, a former commissioners from the Amistad Commission in a workshop. And I was probably asked about four days before the workshop. And so I went into panic mode. First I said, no, I can't. And then I thought, but they're asking West Orange to present, not me. They were asking West Orange because they see West Orange as a district moving in the right direction with Amistad. And I thought, what a wonderful thing. You know, just two years ago, I was questioning if the district was doing anything for Amistad. And now we're being held up as a model district. And so I spoke to, um, Dr. Kascón and Mr. Alper to kind of get their blessing to move on with it. And then worked with Mr. Mendez and, um, Mr. Figurito and pulled together, um, the presentation. And I was told that, um, there are lots of people interested in what we're doing here in West Orange. And there, we will be getting some inquiries and have been asked if, um, I would be interested in talking about West Orange and other venues. So I just wanted to share that with my fellow board members because it's a, a pat on the back for all of us, um, all of the staff, um, in the Curriculum Instruction Department and Mr. Mendez. So kudos to, to us. Thank you.
All right, Ms. Merklinger.
Hi, um, so I just, you know, definitely echo what, um, Gary and Terry have both said, um, just about, you know, we are hearing what the community has to say, um, we are listening. But I think what gives us the confidence is that we have Dr. Kascón leading the ship for us. And I would just say to the folks that are, you know, worried to just trust the process. You know, we've, we've done everything we possibly can, um, to ensure the safety. And like Terry said, you know, nothing's 100%, um, but we're doing the best we can to be, to get as close as we can to that. So, um, I look forward to seeing how, um, the hybrid model goes for our students. And I'm, I know a lot of the students in our district and even actually a lot of the teachers that I've spoken with are really excited to get back in their classrooms. So, um, looking forward to seeing how that goes. Definitely saw, learned a lot, uh, last week during the, um, the conference. A lot of interesting topics, um, just in terms of SEL and, um, implementing policies on equity in English learners. There was one on esports, which I thought was really interesting and how that's played a huge part with, uh, COVID and, and helping students with their social emotional learning and, um, just even the, the opportunities for college, um, scholarships that I wasn't really aware of. So a lot of good information that we learned. But with that, I also just want to recognize that, um, you know, in terms of getting back to some sort of the normalcy, I want to congratulate our football team that I believe just won or was crowned, uh, conference champs. They are three and one, I believe. So congratulations to our football team. Our soccer teams are, are doing really well as, um, you know, and everyone's, uh, enjoying getting out to those games. And, you know, the adherence to the protocols that the NJ SIA has put in place. You know, I really, um, thank our students who are following those and being models, um, of what those rules are and masking up when they're required to, our coaches and everyone who's, uh, complying with that. Also want to recognize that our district was, uh, awarded, um, top placement for the Communications Award. Um, for our, uh, Real Leaders Were A Masked, uh, campaign. So, um, definitely congratulations to everyone that, uh, was a part of that. Um, I think that was a great, I think the governor even shouted us out, so that was awesome to see. This week, we have the pep rally for our seniors, so I'm glad that we're able to provide them with, uh, homecoming and senior night, um, and that is limited, uh, to just our seniors. So, um, very happy that we're able to do that. And I know there's a lot of protocols and, uh, things in place to ensure the safety of the community with that. And for those of you, uh, celebrating Halloween this week, um, there is a, and it's on the screen right now. For those that are participating, uh, the town did come up with this flyer for homes that are participating and giving out candy, uh, to kids. You know, there's always the good old fashioned turn off all your lights, but, um, this way is easily identified, um, that your home is giving out candy. So, um, looking forward to Halloween and have a great night.
All right, Ms. Tony Cliff.
Thank you, Mr. Alper. Would like to echo the welcomes to our new board, our student board representatives, Olivia Ridley and Andre Celestin. We always really enjoy having our student representatives, um, join us and always look forward to hearing about the initiatives they're working on. So welcome. And, um, I think on the reopening, uh, Ms. Trigg Scales expressed, you know, what so many of us here on the board feel, uh, she did it so eloquently. Uh, we know we can't please everyone, but we're really, feel like we're doing what we can to make our schools as safe as possible and the transition into a high flex model, a good one for, uh, everyone involved. And we appreciate everyone who came out tonight and spoke about your concerns and your aspirations for our district. And, um, we hope to, uh, do the best we can over the next couple of weeks. Uh, we still have another week or two to go and planning, so, um, you know, keep the information coming towards us and let us know where you might have concerns. Uh, we are, we are listening to you. Some of my colleagues have also spoke about the, uh, NJ SBA Board Workshop last week. It was, uh, um, a great, there was so much information, you couldn't possibly take it all in. So I'm given, I'm glad they're giving us a year to kind of go through some of the presentations that we didn't get to see, um, because there was a ton of information. They provide some great training and, you know, please know that we, as your board members, are all committed to learning to be better board members and are taking these opportunities seriously. So we appreciate, uh, being able to do the workshop. And I hope, uh, next year, we'll actually be able to gather in person in Atlantic City. And I also want to just congratulate, uh, Dr. Joanne Polara, um, because by the next board meeting, you will be officially retired. So, um, we, uh, I hope you have a lot of celebrations and a wonderful send off, uh, for your years of service here in the district. I also want to congratulate our valedictorian, Celia Murphy Bronstein, and our salutatorian, Carlos Herbozo. Um, we're both, we are all so proud of your accomplishments and, um, we look forward to seeing what you do in the years to come. And, um, I'm going to keep my fingers crossed that we will actually get to hear you speak, uh, at commencement, uh, this, in, uh, 2021. So congratulations to both of you. I also got to get out, uh, this weekend and go to see a marching band presentation, uh, for the parents. And that was a really wonderful, uh, presentation. They did a series of Queen songs and, um, it was, it felt like, you know, almost, almost like normal. So it was really good to see, um, our marching band out there and the students worked really, really hard and it showed. And it was a great performance. So that's all for me, back to you, Mr. Alper.
All right, thank you. Yeah, I think, uh, everyone's really covered everything I had, um, workshop. There were definitely some interesting classes this year. I think, you know, functionally, the most interesting one I was in was actually about the needlepoint bipolar ionization technology, of all things, um, which, you know, turned out to, you know, I was in and I, something, something interesting came up and I sent a text message out about it to Dr. Kascón. And I said, oh, we got to ask our guys about this. And then the screen changed and the guy came into it late, so I didn't see who all the presenters were. The screen changed and the next guy on screen was our architect. So I said, oh, all right, we're covered. We don't have to go track these people down. We know, we know what we got there. Yeah, so I think that's it. I don't want to keep this, keep us here any longer. That'll wrap tonight up. Our next meeting is a policy workshop at 6:00 PM on November 4th, right here on the internet, followed by, yes, sir.
Can I add one thing?
Of course.
I would be remiss if I did not.
By all means.
And I'm, I will have an opportunity to tell him this personally, but since this is a public opportunity to do it, Mr. Calavano, uh, I see, uh, I, I can say that he will, I will, uh, definitely miss him. Uh, as the business administrator, as a new superintendent coming in, um, it's been tremendously valuable to have an experienced business administrator, uh, knowing that he's, you know, he's, if there's ever a question about school finance, you know, John has the answer to it. And, you know, he'll be tough to replace. And, uh, I'll miss him around the joint too, because, you know, he's, he's, he's a, he's a good man and a, and a good person. So, uh, we appreciate it, John, and, uh, I'll miss you. Thank you for everything.
Absolutely. So, our next meeting, a policy workshop at 6:00 PM on November 4th, followed by our next regular meeting, November 16th. And with that, we are adjourned. Have a good night.
Thank you. This is to inform everyone that when I end the meeting, it will end for those both on and off screen and no other business will be conducted. Thank you and have a great night, everyone.